Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service, and Mac Pan from, where is it? Ketchville Fire Department, going to present the awards tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient, Reed Wynott, of the Bridgewater Fire Department.
Oh, yeah.
Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary. With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire service have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to safeguard communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donations from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your fire hall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin, that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Glad to see everybody's here.
I just, well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the Special Stamp Club for this, the stamp cancellation, right? It's like the pictorial stamp cancellation. I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bitchanewispa Park, which also has the nice stamp on it for the park. So I have a couple of these that are on display, so whenever I'm meeting with developers or business people interested in coming to our town to start a new business, this is one of the things they see. And so, to mark our 125th birthday with another, I find these, obviously they're unique, but they're also very special, I think it's very good. So thank you all for putting this together and for being here today.
Anyways, thank you, everybody, for coming for Bridgewater 125. And the Philatelic Society has asked us to produce a cancellation commemorating this again, so which we have done, and it's turned out with very positive reviews. And Canada Post is really pleased to be involved with supporting Philatelic Society and Bridgewater. So, of course, it's just been a great time. So the council is officially released as of right now, and please take part in some of the festivities. We have coffee, tea, donuts, anything you folks like. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for that.
Yeah?
Thanks for all this stuff.
Good evening. I would call this special Town Council meeting for Bridgewater Town Council to order, kind of just a one budget, one item agenda, which is budget. And just, as always, note that Town of Bridgewater is located in the Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and we are all treaty people. And with that, it is just a one item agenda. Can I motion to approve the agenda, which is just budget? Councilor Newell, seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald, all those in favor? Motion is carried, and I will turn it over to the CIO, and we'll jump right in.
Okay. So, good evening, council. Tonight, we are going to present to you the first version of the 2025-26 operating budget. Council has already reviewed the capital budget. So the operating budget, as you have in your package, is $34,106,545. That's a 6.5% increase from last year's budget. And as mentioned, you've seen your capital budget over the last few meetings, and the capital budget is $16,109,250. This budget holds a tax rate at the same rate as the last two years, being $1.85 per $100 of residential assessment, $407 per $100 for commercial, and points, or six cents for every $100 for the LCLC special purpose tax. The wastewater rate, the overall revenue, we were proposing a 15% increase, and the surplus from the wastewater rate will go to reserve to fund the capital budgets that you will see in your 10-year capital plan over the next 10 years, or and beyond. We have a significant need for revenue sources to fund wastewater. So it's not an equal 15% across the board for all categories, but they're shown there, and Kim will go over the wastewater rates a little later. And through this budget, there's an alignment with council's strategic priorities that you just approved at our last meeting, and those priorities will be implemented with this budget as proposed. So before we get into the budget highlights, I just wanted to explain the format of the budget to council so that we understand that. So, in your budget document, the thicker one, you'll see that there is, you'll have what we call a baseline, an adjusted baseline for 2526. That's your core. That's your budget that's required to support your existing services, so nothing new. There's nothing new in there. It's just all stripped down to what's required to deliver the services that the town delivers if we did nothing new. So that's your number there. Then we have additions. So additions are the new things. So those could be a new service, it could be a one-time addition. So you'll see some of the additions in there relate to your strategic priorities, but they're either one-time, so they're just in for this year, and when we're done, the expense disappears, or they're reoccurring, meaning that they can occur year over year. So we have shown them in the presentation with either noting they're one-time or reoccurring, so you can see that as well. And then we have deletions, and deletions are those things that were one-time last year, they're coming out, or they're expenses that are no longer required. So an example would be the municipal election last year. There was money in for municipal elections, or the town's birthday, the 125th birthday, there was expenses in there for that, so those come out. So that's an example of a deletion. And then what you have is the final number, which is your revised baseline. So that your revised baseline is your adjusted baseline plus your additions minus your deletions to get to your revised baseline. So that's how we come up with the final number. So the budget's been prepared to, as I say, the baseline is the core, everything's stripped out, so we're really focusing on what's new within the budget itself. So what are the changes? What's going in? What's coming out to get to your revised? So through this budget, there are significant investments in infrastructure that's required to support growth and development within the town. So in your capital budget, you have $10.1 million for wastewater, road upgrades, there's $2.845 million, and that includes pavement management, as well as Empire Street in St. Phillips. Sidewalks, there's $160,000 for sidewalk improvements, park developments, 368, and wastewater capacity strategy, to look at how we increase our wastewater capacity to accommodate development. We also see the business park development planning through this budget, so there's money in the budget proposed for land sales and a marketing strategy for Exit 12A and the conceptual plan. And then there is funds to see more business park infrastructure with power being extended out to Exit 12A. So overall, that's all part of our $17 million investment that we've made in that area. Energized Bridgewater, this is the last year for Energized Bridgewater, and there's $1.39 million in the budget for that, but that is fully funded from a grant, so it's not funded through our tax rate. Downtown development plan will be developed this year. We'll be looking at an investment and attraction tourism strategy for $15,000, and then the housing action plan will be implemented this year. So we just received an announcement recently from the federal government that we received $883,000 to fund that. So that's fully funded. So when you see anything in the budget that is housing action plan, it's funded by grant. In terms of community well-being, through this budget, council will be investing in recreation facilities to the amount of $2.36 million, and that includes the LCLC grant, as well, operating grant, as well as parks and playgrounds, and the operation of the outdoor pool. The accessibility action plan will be implemented, and there's $26,000 in the budget to fund the coordinator position. Housing action plan will be implemented. Public transit, there's continued investment in stop improvements and shelters, so there's $17,000 in the budget for that. And we, this budget supports the continued extension of hours, and that's funded through a grant as well. And then there is also the looking at future expansion opportunities with transit as one of council's strategic priorities. So the net for transit's $248,000. We continue with the reduction of energy poverty through smart cities funding at $1.39, and then the anti-racism inclusion and diversity. So that's the coordinator expenses, as well as funds to implement some of the activities. The museum, this year, we'll see, it's not really an operating grant because we are making that transition, but the town will be funding the museum component of Recreation and Culture at $188,000. So that's actually $15,000 lower than last year. And community events will continue to be funded, and there's $106,000 in the budget for that. So that's Canada Day, Christmas on La Havre, Harvest Moon, and Music on the Riverbank. Through this budget, there will be support for nonprofit organizations in the amount of $218,000. So that includes grants to nonprofits, as well as sponsorship funding at $50,000, and then property tax exemption at $123,000. Low-income property tax exemption also supports those with low income, and there's $70,000 in the budget for property tax exemptions or reductions there. And then through this budget, we'll continue to fund Pro Kids, as well as a proposal for funding a pro fund, which will remove barriers to not only youth, but adults to access recreation programs. This budget also continues the investment in emergency response, so fire, there is a $1.8 million line item there for fire services. And this year, we'll be proposing to carry forward that, or bring into this year's budget again, because it wasn't spent last year, $50,000 for the fire service review to ensure that we have a good handle on with all the development activity, what level of fire service we're required to have to support the town. And police protection, the net cost is $4.6 million. And then emergency response for Remo is $49,416, and council will receive, next council meeting, the recommendation from the advisory committee on that. And then the Hemlock-Woolley Adelgit project continues at $158,109, and there's some funding to offset those costs. In terms of ensuring fiscal responsibility, through this budget, we'll continue to contribute to reserves, so there is $1.14 million going to the wastewater reserves, and that's to help fund future wastewater capital requirements. Sourcing of grants, this budget has $4.6 million of capital grant funding and $1.03 million in operating grants. So that's in this year's budget. That excludes transfers from other levels of government and police funding. So that is grants that have been sourced to offset our projects. That doesn't include the larger grants that we will have heard, like $40 million or $42 million in wastewater funding. Those are spread over 10 years, so this is just this year's portion of some of that funding. The asset management plan, we'll see that move forward this year, and we've got some funding in there to look at software. We'll be investing in long-range budgeting tools with a software investment there so that we can do long-range operating budgets, in addition to our long-range capital plans. And infrastructure charges, this number's been in our budget for a few years, but this year, we hope to see that complete, the development of infrastructure charges and development charges to help offset the cost of infrastructure related to development. And to ensure debt affordability, we're increasing the amount of capital that's funded from the operating budget, certainly that's the recommendation. So there's $2.2 million proposed to be funded, have capital to be funded from the operating budget, and when you do that, it lessens the amount you have to borrow. In terms of organizational excellence, through council's strategic priorities, this budget proposes funds that will start the process to establish a wastewater utility, so there's $30,000 in the budget for that. There's an operations review at $100,000, and we'll be establishing, as required, through legislation and regulations, a equity, diversity, and inclusion plan. As mentioned before, asset management will help council with better decision-making when it comes to capital planning. Long-range budget software will help with our operating long-range planning, and data governance and privacy management framework and program will continue to be put in place this year as well. So that's it for the budget highlights. I'm going to hand it over to Kim now, who's going to take you through the budget in a bit more detail.
All right, so Tammy mentioned earlier that the full budget is just over $34 million. So this is just a little more breakdown between the different sources of how that operating budget's funded. So we have non-tax revenue of $5.4 million, a small amount coming in from reserves for operating of $10,000, and the tax revenue of $28.6 million. So I think everyone's used to seeing this chart before, it's included in the public document, but it just gives you a sense of that breakdown. So you can see the percentages that are of the revenue that are going to the various different departments. So you can see police services at 18.17%, you can see engineering at 9.61%, and so on. So both the dollars and the percentages are there, just to give a bit more of a visual of how the tax revenue was spent. Again, just kind of the same thing I just showed you a bit earlier. The tax revenue makes up 83% of all the revenue sources, and then there's small amounts, sales of service, other revenue from own sources, unconditional transfers, are all very small portions of the pie, the bulk of our revenue coming from taxation. If you all recall, there were some changes last year, and it changed some of our mandatory contributions, so some of them went away, like housing and corrections. So you'll see that we still have an education contribution, the regional library contribution, and our contribution for assessment services are all there, the main one being the education contribution that's increased in dollars. So the rate doesn't change, but as uniform assessment increases, so does our education contribution. So that's $231,000 increase this year. As Tammy explained, a lot of what's in the budget presentation talks about additions and deletions, but we did want to give you an idea of some of the baseline that did change. We said that's there, and it just enables us to provide the same level of service, but we thought we would break that down, just call out some of those bigger things. So as I just discussed, the education contribution is increased by $231,000. There's a decrease in police fees for service revenue, so that decrease is $100,000. The garbage contract is increased by 8.12% for garbage collection, so that has increased our expenses by $38,000. Again, just the baseline, same level of service. I believe it was probably two weeks ago when council approved the award for the insurance contract, which is saving us about $214,000 a year. We kind of have to finalize a list of assets and things like that, so it's approximate, but it could actually be a little bit more by the time everything shakes out. So that's great news. Not a whole lot of savings in this budget, so that's a good one. Waste site expenditures going up about $33,000. The LCLC operating budget estimate, we don't have their actual approved budget or recommended budget yet, so we're estimating a $200,000 increase in their operating and $115,000 increase in their capital budget, just based on the prior fiscal year's budget. Time and attendance, so if you recall, that's a project we've been working on in finance for a while, and so this is actually an increase to the baseline because there's an actual software fee on an annual basis for that. So that gets added to our baseline from this point on. Regional inspection services, so as you're aware, we also have an agreement with a service provider for that, and that is increasing our expenses over last year by $127,000, and there's some savings from removing some of the services here. Part of that increase is actually just a one-time cost to transition our records to electronic, so next year, that should come out, and that's about $85,000, so it's about even, slash save a little money. Municipal Joint Services Board, HR costs, an increase of $22,700. Not all increase in service, but I believe they're providing some training and things that were included in that budget for this year, as well as IT costs going up $17,800. This is our first full year of having a safety officer at the Municipal Joint Services Board, so our contribution for that is going up by $12,000. And then we have a few things going on with our own salary. We have new step changes for the new salary scale that was presented in the past month. We have QP and non-union increases. As the QP agreement expires in March, we're anticipating changes there, as well as CPI increases for non-union staff. And then an increase in salary and benefits for police of $140,000. So those are the big things that have shifted in that baseline piece. So again, back to the additions/deletions portion, so we have additions of $2.9 million and deletions of $1.3 million for that overall 13-point, or 34.1 million baseline budget, revised baseline at the end of 2526. So each department is going to talk to you and present their own additions and deletions, and you can ask questions as you go, whereas each department completes their presentation.
I can see this. So the, in terms of revenue for the admin services, which includes, there's economic development, there's community navigation, there's the admin support services to council, there's asset management in there, and grant coordinator, so there's, it's not just the admin support services to council. So here, you'll see that we have proposed revenue of $75,000, that's for the marketing levy. So council approved that bylaw, and you'll see that we'll start receiving a levy, and we're proposing that that go into a reserve, which you'll see in the finance budget as an addition, until council determines what they want to do with that funding, that's where it'll get placed. Grants, there is a $12,500 grant that will help offset some of the asset manager salary that we obtained, and then you'll see that there's some grants that are coming out, so they're grants that were one-time thing, so they expired, so those would be deleted from the revenue line within admin, and those total $195,000. So $87,500 of new revenue coming in, and grants that have been completed are $195,000, which will be going out. In terms of expense additions, just to see some small things here, but they're all shown and accounted for, so just some small travel expense to do with the network of Michelin Cities. Sponsorships, this is $40,000 for year three of five for the Brighter Days campaign. So that was a commitment council made. The asset management software that has been referenced is shown as an addition for 33. Professional development admins, so increased staff, there's additional professional development expenses. Legal services, this is proposed to increase by $25,000, and this is $15,000 for union negotiations that will be commencing in April. And then we put in an allowance of $10,000 for code of conduct investigation. You may not need that, but without having that budget line there, we would have to go into reserves or just see if we had an incident, hope for surplus to spend it, so we thought it best to budget for that. And we'll be securing or buying services out of retainer essentially, so that we could go use those services. Consulting, $100,000, that's the operations review. Land sales, land prep and marketing, that's $55,000, so that is $25,000 for marketing. So that's funded through a grant as well. And then there is also the looking at future expansion opportunities with transit as one of council's strategic priorities. So the net for transit's $248,000. We continue with the reduction of energy poverty through smart cities funding at $1.39, and then the anti-racism inclusion and diversity, so that's a coordinator expense, as well as funds to implement some of the activities. The museum, this year, we'll see, it's not really an operating grant because we are making that transition, but the town will be funding the museum component of Recreation and Culture at $188,000. So that's actually $15,000 lower than last year. And community events will continue to be funded, and there's $106,000 in the budget for that. So that's Canada Day, Christmas on La Havre, Harvest Moon, and Music on the Riverbank. Through this budget, there will be support for nonprofit organizations in the amount of $218,000. So that includes grants to nonprofits, as well as sponsorship funding at $50,000, and then property tax exemption at $123,000. Low-income property tax exemption also supports those with low income, and there's $70,000 in the budget for property tax exemptions or reductions there. And then through this budget, we'll continue to fund Pro Kids, as well as a proposal for funding a pro fund, which will remove barriers to not only youth, but adults to access recreation programs. This budget also continues the investment in emergency response, so fire, there is a $1.8 million line item there for fire services. And this year, we'll be proposing to carry forward that, or bring into this year's budget again, because it wasn't spent last year, $50,000 for the fire service review to ensure that we have a good handle on with all the development activity, what level of fire service we're required to have to support the town. And police protection, the net cost is $4.6 million. And then emergency response for Remo is $49,416, and council will receive, next council meeting, the recommendation from the advisory committee on that. And then the Hemlock-Woolley Adelgit project continues at $158,109, and there's some funding to offset those costs. In terms of ensuring fiscal responsibility, through this budget, we'll continue to contribute to reserves, so there is $1.14 million going to the wastewater reserves, and that's to help fund future wastewater capital requirements. Sourcing of grants, this budget has $4.6 million of capital grant funding and $1.03 million in operating grants, so that's in this year's budget. That excludes transfers from other levels of government and police funding. So that is grants that have been sourced to offset our projects. That doesn't include the larger grants that we will have heard, like $40 million or $42 million in wastewater funding. Those are spread over 10 years, so this is just this year's portion of some of that funding. The asset management plan, we'll see that move forward this year, and we've got some funding in there to look at software. We'll be investing in long-range budgeting tools with a software investment there so that we can do long-range operating budgets, in addition to our long-range capital plans. And infrastructure charges, this number's been in our budget for a few years, but this year, we hope to see that complete, the development of infrastructure charges and development charges to help offset the cost of infrastructure related to development. And to ensure debt affordability, we're increasing the amount of capital that's funded from the operating budget, certainly that's the recommendation. So there's $2.2 million proposed to be funded, have capital to be funded from the operating budget, and when you do that, it lessens the amount you have to borrow. In terms of organizational excellence, through council's strategic priorities, this budget proposes funds that will start the process to establish a wastewater utility, so there's $30,000 in the budget for that. There's an operations review at $100,000, and we'll be establishing, as required, through legislation and regulations, a equity, diversity, and inclusion plan. As mentioned before, asset management will help council with better decision-making when it comes to capital planning. Long-range budget software will help with our operating long-range planning, and data governance and privacy management framework and program will continue to be put in place this year as well. So that's it for the budget highlights. I'm going to hand it over to Kim now, who's going to take you through the budget in a bit more detail.
All right, so Tammy mentioned earlier that the full budget is just over $34 million. So this is just a little more breakdown between the different sources of how that operating budget's funded. So we have non-tax revenue of $5.4 million, a small amount coming in from reserves for operating of $10,000, and the tax revenue of $28.6 million. So I think everyone's used to seeing this chart before, it's included in the public document, but it just gives you a sense of that breakdown. So you can see the percentages that are of the revenue that are going to the various different departments. So you can see police services at 18.17%, you can see engineering at 9.61%, and so on. So both the dollars and the percentages are there, just to give a bit more of a visual of how the tax revenue was spent. Again, just kind of the same thing I just showed you a bit earlier. The tax revenue makes up 83% of all the revenue sources, and then there's small amounts, sales of service, other revenue from own sources, unconditional transfers, are all very small portions of the pie, the bulk of our revenue coming from taxation. If you all recall, there were some changes last year, and it changed some of our mandatory contributions, so some of them went away, like housing and corrections. So you'll see that we still have an education contribution, the regional library contribution, and our contribution for assessment services are all there, the main one being the education contribution that's increased in dollars. So the rate doesn't change, but as uniform assessment increases, so does our education contribution. So that's $231,000 increase this year. As Tammy explained, a lot of what's in the budget presentation talks about additions and deletions, but we did want to give you an idea of some of the baseline that did change. We said that's there, and it just enables us to provide the same level of service, but we thought we would break that down, just call out some of those bigger things. So as I just discussed, the education contribution is increased by $231,000. There's a decrease in police fees for service revenue, so that decrease is $100,000. The garbage contract is increased by 8.12% for garbage collection, so that has increased our expenses by $38,000. Again, just the baseline, same level of service. I believe it was probably two weeks ago when council approved the award for the insurance contract, which is saving us about $214,000 a year. We kind of have to finalize a list of assets and things like that, so it's approximate, but it could actually be a little bit more by the time everything shakes out. So that's great news. Not a whole lot of savings in this budget, so that's a good one. Waste site expenditures going up about $33,000. The LCLC operating budget estimate, we don't have their actual approved budget or recommended budget yet, so we're estimating a $200,000 increase in their operating and $115,000 increase in their capital budget, just based on the prior fiscal year's budget. Time and attendance, so if you recall, that's a project we've been working on in finance for a while, and so this is actually an increase to the baseline because there's an actual software fee on an annual basis for that, so that gets added to our baseline from this point on. Regional inspection services, so as you're aware, we also have an agreement with a service provider for that, and that is increasing our expenses over last year by $127,000, and there's some savings from removing some of the services here. Part of that increase is actually just a one-time cost to transition our records to electronic, so next year, that should come out, and that's about $85,000, so it's about even, flash save a little money. Municipal Joint Services Board, HR costs, an increase of $22,700. Not all increase in service, but I believe they're providing some training and things that were included in that budget for this year, as well as IT costs going up $17,800. This is our first full year of having a safety officer at the Municipal Joint Services Board, so our contribution for that is going up by $12,000. And then we have a few things going on with our own salary. We have new step changes for the new salary scale that was presented in the past month. We have QP and non-union increases. As the QP agreement expires in March, we're anticipating changes there, as well as CPI increases for non-union staff. And then an increase in salary and benefits for police of $140,000. So those are the big things that have shifted in that baseline piece. So again, back to the additions/deletions portion, so we have additions of $2.9 million and deletions of $1.3 million for that overall 13-point, or 34.1 million baseline budget, revised baseline at the end of 2526. So each department is going to talk to you and present their own additions and deletions, and you can ask questions as you go, whereas each department completes their presentation.
I can see this.
In terms of organizational excellence, through Council's strategic priorities, this budget proposes funds that will start the process to establish a wastewater utility. So there's 30,000 in the budget for that. There's an operations review at 100,000 and we'll be establishing, as required through legislation and regulations, a equity, diversity, and inclusion plan. As mentioned before, asset management will help Council with better decision-making when it comes to capital planning. Long-range budget software will help with our operating long-range planning. And data governance and privacy management framework and program will continue to be put in place this year as well. So that's it for the budget highlights. I'm going to hand it over to Kim now, who's going to take you through the budget in a bit more detail.
All right. So Tammy mentioned earlier that the full budget is just over $34 million. So this is just a little more breakdown between the different sources of how that operating budget's funded. So we have non-tax revenue of $5.4 million, a small amount coming in from reserves for operating of 10,000, and the tax revenue of 28.6 million. So I think everyone's used to seeing this chart before. It's included in the public document, but it just gives you a sense of that breakdown. So you can see the percentages that are of the revenue that are going to the various different departments. So you can see police services at 18.17 percent. You can see engineering at 9.61 percent, and so on. So both the dollars and the percentages are there, just to give a bit more of a visual of how the tax revenue was spent. Again, just kind of the same thing I just showed you a bit earlier. The tax revenue makes up 83 percent of all the revenue sources. And then there's small amounts, sales of service, other revenue from own sources, unconditional transfers, are all very small portions of the pie, the bulk of our revenue coming from If you all recall, there were some changes last year, and it changed some of our mandatory contributions. So some of them went away, like housing and corrections. So you'll see that we still have an education contribution, the regional library contribution, and our contribution for assessment services are all there. The main one being the education contribution that's increased in dollars. So the rate doesn't change, but as uniform assessment increases, so does our education contribution. So that's $231,000 increase this year. As Tammy explained, a lot of what's in the budget presentation talks about additions and deletions, but we did want to give you an idea of some of the baseline that did change. We said that's there, and it just enables us to provide the same level of service, but we thought we would break that down, just call out some of those bigger things. So as I just discussed, the education contribution is increased by 231,000. There's a decrease in police fees for service revenue, so that decreases 100,000. The garbage contract is increased by 8.12 percent for garbage collection, so that has increased our expenses by 38,000. Again, just the baseline, same level of service. I believe it was probably two weeks ago when Council approved the award for the insurance contract, which is saving us about $214,000 a year. We kind of have to finalize a list of assets and things like that, so it's approximate, but it could actually be a little bit more by the time everything shakes out. So that's great news. Not a whole lot of savings in this budget, so that's a good one. Waste site expenditures going up about 33,000. The LCLC operating budget estimate, we don't have their actual approved budget or recommended budget yet, so we're estimating a $200,000 increase in their operating and 115,000 increase in their capital budget, just based on the prior fiscal year's budget. Time and attendance, so if you recall, that's a project we've been working on in finance for a while. And so this is actually an increase to the baseline because there's an actual software fee on an annual basis for that. So that gets added to our baseline from this point on. Regional inspection services, so as you're aware, we also have an agreement with a service provider for that, and that is increasing our expenses over last year by 127,000. And there's some savings from removing some of the services here. Part of that increase is actually just a one-time cost to transition our records to electronic. So next year, that should come out, and that's about 85,000. So it's about even, slash save a little money. Municipal Joint Services Board, HR costs, an increase of 22,700. Not all increase in service, but I believe they're providing some training and things that were included in that budget for this year, as well as IT costs going up 17,800. This is our first full year of having a safety officer at the Municipal Joint Services Board, so our contribution for that is going up by 12,000. And then we have a few things going on with our own salary. We have new step changes for the new salary scale that was presented in the past month. We have QP and non-union increases. As the QP agreement expires in March, we're anticipating changes there, as well as CPI increases for non-union staff. And then an increase in salary and benefits for police of 140,000. So those are the big things that have shifted in that baseline piece. So again, back to the additions/deletions portion. So we have additions of 2.9 million and deletions of 1.3 million for that overall 13-point, or 34.1 million baseline budget, revised baseline at the end of '25-'26. So each department is going to talk to you and present their own additions and deletions, and you can ask questions as you go, whereas each department completes their presentation.
So in terms of revenue for the admin services, which includes, there's economic development, there's community navigation, there's the admin support services to council, there's asset management in there, and grant coordinator. So it's not just the admin support services to council. So here you'll see that we have proposed revenue of 75,000. That's for the marketing levy. So Council approved that bylaw, and you'll see that we'll start receiving a levy, and we're proposing that that go into a reserve, which you'll see in the finance budget as an addition. Until Council determines what they want to do with that funding, that's where it'll get placed. Grants, there's a $12,500 grant that will help offset some of the asset manager salary that we obtained. And then you'll see that there's some grants that are coming out. So they're grants that were, they were one-time thing, so they expired. So those would be deleted from the revenue line within admin, and those total 195,000. So 87,500 of new revenue coming in, and grants that have been completed are 195, which will be going out. In terms of expense additions, just to see some small things here, but they're all shown and accounted for. So just some small travel expense to do with the network in Michelin cities. Sponsorships, this is 40,000 for year three of five for the brighter days campaign. So that was a commitment Council made. The asset management software that has been referenced is shown as an addition for '33. Professional development admins, so increased staff, there's additional professional development expenses. Legal services, this is proposed to increase by 25,000, and this is 15,000 for union negotiations that will be commencing in April. And then we put in an allowance of 10,000 for code of conduct investigation. You may not need that, but without having that budget line there, we would have to go into reserves or just see if we had an incident, hope for surplus to spend it. So we thought it best to budget for that. And we'll be securing or buying services out of retainer essentially, so that we could go use those services. Consulting, 100,000, that's the operations review. Land sales, land prep and marketing, that's the 55,000. So that is 25,000 for marketing and appraisals for exit 12A. And then there's the Glen Allen work and some funds for surveying at 30,000. Consulting advisory services at 30,000, so that's 15,000 for the tourism strategy, and then exit 12A to finalize the concept plan. Marketing and promotion, so there's a branding strategy at 15,000. And then some funds to look at the downtown activation work that Council has identified as part of their strategic priorities. Community navigation, a small amount there, 5,000. And then contingency of 195,817. So this is where the salary review money was put, and that we had, I think, around 135. And then the rest is miscellaneous contingency, which is small for a budget of 34 million, but those are the unplanned things that might come up, that there's funds there to pull from. And as you'll see from looking at the budget document, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. So last year, we spent 10,000 of 100,000, I don't even remember what the number was, but it was close to 200,000. So it's really, that's what it's meant for. Regional EDI, there's 20,000 there, and as I indicated, that was to look at equity, diversity, and inclusion projects to implement them. The coordinator's salary is shown in the baseline. Emergency measures, we're proposing to have an additional staff member as an alternate PEC, so that we can increase our staff resources there. And then computer software licensing, updates and licensing is a migration expense to migrate laser fiche to the cloud and take it off the server, so reduce the server maintenance for the Joint Services Board. And then here, you can see all the deletions, so I won't go over these unless Council has any particular questions, but they were the things that were done last year that are no longer required to be done, and they are pretty much one-time things.
Questions on those? Deputy Mayor?
The 40,000 for brighter days, is that included in the 218,000 for tax exemption sponsorships? Yeah, I told it in there. Yeah. Okay.
Other questions? Ken?
On the, sorry, Tam, on the contingency line of 195,800, so you said, what, about 130 for?
Well, about 130, 135. That includes salary and then the benefit costs.
And the benefits in there?
Yeah, we'd go with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can't recall the date when we expect the EDI plan to be ready.
So that is going to be presented to Council March 27th, right? No, 24th. 24th. Yeah. So there are actions that are, they're not necessarily detailed there because the committee needs to review and approve unless the committee gets formed, but this would enable some of those initiatives to be implemented, once approved by the committee and agreed to by the councils.
Just because I'm not aware, what's the brighter day campaign?
That is from the House Services Foundation.
Hospital expansion.
Yeah. So we committed 200,000, I believe it was, over five years.
Good money spent. Great money spent. Other questions?
Just for my clarity, when we look at the policing budget, that does not include capital, like the cars, the vehicles, those go under capital, right?
Yeah, those are, those are in our capital budget, yeah. We fund them from operations, I believe. Yeah. I think we're using a little bit of reserve this year for the police capital, but yeah.
So that 4.2 minutes.
That's, that's.
That's operation.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep going.
There's events there. Oh, yeah, sorry. So, events, so the new thing here in events is the $10,000 sponsorship for the 55-plus games. So Council's already seen that and agreed to that, but it's, we have to show it as an addition. And then we're on finance.
Okay, so the finance list is short, thankfully. We have additions, which is the shared services procurement that was presented by the Municipal Joint Services Board a few weeks ago, and the Tannen Bridgewater's portion of that is 28,100. It'll form part of future baselines, but because it's a new service and a new level of service, that is as an addition this year. Under contractual services, there's $60,000 as an addition. That is primarily for budget software and implementation of internal controls, review findings, and fraud assessment as well. Under special projects, there's $45,000. As you know, we're implementing a new time and attendance system, and we're going to need some additional hardware, such as tablets, time clocks, and so on. So there's an allowance there for that. Hopefully, it's a little high, but by the time you buy tablets and kiosks to hold them and protect them from damage and whatnot, you know, but it is a one-time cost. In addition, Tammy mentioned earlier, because of the new marketing levy, there will be a transfer to operating reserves, and all the reserve transfers usually show up under finance, so you'll see that there as well. I don't think we are intending to use any of those funds at this point in time, that what's collected for '25-'26, and it'll all go in a reserve earmarked for marketing levy. And next up is police.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
I brought the police in.
The time and attendance, so that isn't the software that is $45,000 worth of tablets and stands for them?
Well, just a time clock to clock people in and out is about $7,000.
Okay, and the rest is tablets?
Yes, like iPads with protective cases or kiosks. You know, we have about 12, 15 people clocking all in for 8:00 AM. We need more than one tablet. We have multiple, like, we don't need anything in this building. It's the off-site locations where people don't have a computer that they work at every day, so we have to be able to have the right devices for that. We're just at the setting up stage right now, so it's an estimate, as we haven't identified an exact count on how many we'll need, but they do need to be Apple product, so they're not the cheapest tablets possible.
Just a question about the contractual service. So it's 60,000, it's marked one time with reoccurring, so.
Yes, so the budget software, I expect there'll be an implementation fee and then an ongoing annual fee for, it's usually cloud-based software, which often now have an annual subscription fee.
So it won't be the full 60,000?
That's right. It's, I checked both boxes because it's a little, a little each.
Vice Chief?
Good evening, everyone. So for our operating budget, the commission, there's no new staffing involved with our budget that was prepared and approved by the commission. As the Director of Finance said, there was a deletion of 100,000. Those were done through third-party checks. It was a result of basically updating our revenue based on our last couple of years. We struggled with some staffing when it comes to our communication technicians, and every time we have to train a new person, it takes away three months of checks, so it just brings our revenue more in line. As for additions for the '25-'26 police budget revenues, there's a $30,000 increase. It's a one-time increase. It was a result of a grant approved by Department of Justice, and that was to enhance our services. It's basically for Internet child exploitation investigations, basically training a member and providing a computer and software and electronic storage device in-house for us to do child pornography investigations, categorization, et cetera. So that is reflected over in the additions and deletions, so you'll see that fall under computer software, hardware, computer IT, and small equipment. Basically, it's a $10,000 computer, $10,000 exhibit storage container, and a $10,000 training in the form of two courses for an investigator. You'll see under additions, $32,000, that is for HR and IT support, that's to buy hours of service from the MGSP. As we continue to evolve, you know, our IT issues become more prevalent, and our HR, right now, our HR obviously is not being looked at by Municipal Joint Services when we're dealing in-house, so it will free up some of my time and the deputy's time when dealing with HR or ongoing HR issues. Like I said, computer software updates and licensing, $10,000, that's to move to Office 365. That will be an ongoing recurrence. We're obligated to fall in line with our RCP protocol and to use their programs, et cetera. New leased vehicle for one of our plainclothes cars, you'll see one of them come out down the road, we're purchasing it and rolling it over to replace an elder, an older car. There's a new patrol car, just operating budget falls in line with the capital purchase for tires, et cetera, oil changes, et cetera. Computer hardware and IT referrals is 16,000. That's to enhance our e-ticketing. Instead of writing the old forms, it's scan your license, print the ticket, and printers in the cars. So that's one-time hardware cost. And then there was a $25,000 increase in small equipment, that's to purchase body cams. Those are an annual licensing fee. We really don't purchase them, we buy a license and a camera, and then it goes through the year. So that is, and for eight cameras, just under $2,000 per camera, per year, per storage, per software, et cetera. And then the small police equipment, you'll see, oh, that's where the body cams are from, sorry.
Shouldn't that one be recurring, then? Should it be one time, but should it be recurring?
Yeah. I believe the e-ticketing, so small equipment, okay, so, sorry. Small equipment is computer hardware and referrals. Over the 16,000, six is for e-ticketing, 10,000 is for training for the ICE position. The small equipment is, small equipment, I know there's 10,000, sorry. I got it backwards. So computer hardware referrals is e-ticketing is 6,000, and then 10,000 for the ICE computer. Underneath the 15,000 body worn is 15,000 for body worn camera and 10,000 for the exhibit, electronic exhibit storage device. So the storage device is one time, the cameras will be an ongoing license of $16,000. And then we have some removals, which is the police service log, which we purchased last year, and then just rotating car budgets as we rotate some of our older cars out and purchase a unmarked, and, I'm sorry, purchase a leased vehicle, and so that's just reducing them. So in total, we had 29,000 in deletions and 93.5 in additions. The remainder is through collective bargaining and salaries and benefits.
Questions of the chief? Yes, Councilwoman?
For those body cameras, that 25,000, does that equip, is that all you will need, or will this be, will you be getting more next year?
So, good question. Depends on the future of what happens in the police service. It's $16,000 annually, it's just under $2,000. That encompasses the camera, the storage, the licensing fee, et cetera. So that's eight cameras. Basically, we have five members on patrol, our SSRO, some of our plainclothes officers, you know, and our support NCO. So there's enough cameras that will rotate. So if the service was to change in reduction or increase, then those would be flexible.
Okay.
So they are guaranteed eight devices with two spares, and then if the upgrades happen, it's automatic upgrade of the equipment.
So what we'll equip, as it stands today, I guess, is a bit?
Yes.
Thank you. Another question? Councilor?
Were you guys not already using Office 365? And what, like, what's specifically being prompted by the RCP?
So, no, we don't use Office, we use Outlook. So we're a little behind time. So most of their programs now are becoming online and virtual, and Office 365 is required.
Oh, you guys were hosting it yourself, is what, like, you were hosting it in-house, and now you're moving it to the cloud?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, that's the gap that I was.
Yes, that's what's happening. So yes, we are embracing technology. Catching up a little bit.
My favorite thing.
It's not listed here, but can you just, I know people are always curious, we've got a few EVs in the police fleet.
Sure.
Can you just maybe talk about the operational savings, the costs in the last year?
Sure. So our gas patrol vehicles, so we're running a mixture of Dodge Durangos. We have one Ford Police Hybrid Interceptor, which was, just went into play the latter part of January, that's a new K-9 vehicle, you might have seen it around, it's now marked, it's about visibility, and so the public's aware of, you know, where we are and what we're doing. We don't have a lot of data on that being a hybrid. I know the K-9 officer likes it because he can get out, it stays in electric mode, then if it needs to run, it automatically starts up and goes, charges the battery, and then cuts out again. So, you know, him being one of the highest users in fuel over the last number of years with a Durango, because it's either running full air conditioning or heat, depending on time of the year, 10 hours a day. So our electric vehicles are doing really well. It's costing us about $2,300 a year for power for one of our electric trucks. Cost is a little more, not that high compared to a Mark vehicle, which our Durangos are around $1,400 a month in gas consumption, running 24/7.
So, what'd you say, $2,200 a year?
A year.
Versus $1,400 a month?
So we did a study on the first truck. We only have one charger, so now it's hard to differentiate between the two trucks, but we know for the first truck, it costs us $23,000, $2,300 a year in power. That was for 11 months. We were one month short of a full year. So even if you said $2,500, you know, that would be on the high end of power, and the trucks go 24/7. We've never had to pull one off the road to charge. It was about education of our staff, that when they're at the office, plug them in, keep them charged. We charge them to 80% all the time. The only time we charge them to 100 is if we're going any distance, and then, you know, if we're going across to Waterville or to the Praxel Center, you know, there's no issues with the charge, you know, going in and out. Same as a gas vehicle, if you're going to travel, make sure you got a full tank. The car now, the car's a little more, is even more efficient, but it's only used Monday to Friday, eight hours a day. In the summertime, it's two shifts because we use the SSRO to augment our traffic position, so, but that's only about $500 a year, roughly.
So we're saving over $14,000 a year?
In fuel.
In fuel.
And maintenance. So our maintenance is zero. We haven't spent an ounce of money on maintenance. On the truck's not even a wiper blade. The only thing we've spent is winter tires in two years.
That kind of answers that question.
Even the first truck. We haven't replaced a wiper blade as of yet, so.
That's amazing.
Now, I will admit, there is a $10,000 increase to the police budget that you'll see at the next draft. It didn't make the first draft. It came a result of our last Police Commission meeting, and that was to support an operational review, if Council decides to, in the '25-'26 budget, if you're going to include the police services or not. Council did put in $10,000 to assist with that.
As you know, it was one of our things to do for this organization, so thought that the Police Commission was, if we're going to go through an organizational review for the town, there should be some money put aside to include police, if that's, yeah. That's why that, Chief just mentioned that. Other questions for the chief?
You mentioned, is it 10,000 for specialized electronic device for ICE, for the ICE position? Can you just explain to me, what kind of electronic device costs $10,000 for this particular role?
It is a purpose computer with programs on it to sort and categorize images of child pornography, et cetera, or intimate images, et cetera. So we have to categorize them. Currently, we send stuff to the RCP and headquarters, they will download it, they will prepare it, our members then have to go in and underneath their supervision, use their computers, do the categorization in there. So if you have, say, 40,000 or 50,000 images that you have to categorize, it may take three or four days. You know, so we're competing against everybody else. Justice comes out with a program to, for all the police services to make application to do it in-house. So we prepared a business case for it and was successful. So they basically are purchasing the computer, they are purchasing a purpose electronic evidence locker, so we can put it inside our evidence, because it has to be stored, plugged in, et cetera, to keep stuff activated, whether it's a tablet or a computer or a cellphone, et cetera. And then $10,000 towards two courses. We are sending the, actually, the second person, because if something ever happens, you know, we always train two people in the thing, so if one person's hurt, we don't lose that investigational technique if we're investing that money. So we were successful, so we are paying for one of that over our professional development budget, and the province is paying for one. So if someone, if a person's hurt, we don't lose that investigational technique if we're investing that money. So we were successful, so we are paying for one of that over our professional development budget and the province is paying for one. And that'll be up and running by the end of May.
Councilor Conklin?
Detention and custody. Why are we projecting a much lower expense?
So, lockup and detention is underneath the RCMP. It was contracted through Department of Justice. Initially, we were locking up anywheres from 800 to 900 people a year when we had a vibrant social after-hours activities. Now we're down to 80 or 90. Because the amount, RCMP don't have the ability to bill us directly, we actually get a 30% reduction through Justice because we get the bill from Justice now. So that's, we actually, our budget was $30,000 and, and Justice stepped in and said, you can't, you can't bill the police service directly anymore, which has been going on for 15 years prior to that. So that's why the, the reduction is down to around 23, I think, or 25,000 for, for the use of the cells. We're in an MOU with, with the RCMP, with the province. So we had to renegotiate an MOU with the province who renegotiates with the RCMP. Under the provincial policing agreement, the RCMP don't have the ability to invoice us directly for services rendered.
Gotcha.
Councilor Conklin?
So fees for services down. Do you anticipate if there's less turnover in staff, that those numbers could, the revenue could go back up?
If we are not training members each year, sometimes two, you know, I wouldn't say retention is hard for our staff. I, the commission did ask that. Over the last three years, we had, have gone through five, five part-time communication techs, only one left as a result of relocating, or sorry, two left as a result of relocating. I had one go off a mat leave, so then I had to hire another one, which was not, well, unexpected, but normally we train one a year, it seems like. So that took six months. So, so yes, the opportunity is there to increase revenue in our third-party checks as long as staffing continues. We've seen a large increase in March already.
Yeah, okay, good.
Councilor Conklin?
Crossing guard. So, I understand, yeah, it was only a few months ago that we hired a crossing guard than you were able to.
Yes.
So, and that's just prorated over the months that they were in the position. So how confident are we that we'll have that filled for all 10 months next year, next full year?
Probably, probably not the way, the way they... The last person was hired and they have since resigned. We hired another person who did not show up for work and, and...
Gotcha.
That was it, so it's been vacant.
So hence the crossing, the LED signals for the crosswalks.
It's, it's hard to fill a position that's only a couple of...
It's two hours a day.
Yeah, it's two hours a day. It prevents you from getting another job.
10, 10 hours a week.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Just...
Yep.
One more. Thank you. Law, law enforcement, the bottom line there on expenditures, what, what is that again? Right below crossing guards.
Oh, you're looking at a different document.
They're just looking at the public document.
Law enforcement, so...
Is that bylaw?
Nope. Here with me. I have to, it encompasses a, I have to go through the detailed sheet. So underneath law enforcement, it is the local intelligence officer, which is a cost recovery dollar for dollar. So that would be a intel position that the province pays for. It is the crown prosecuting attorney of, so we pay for sought prosecutions. That is based on, there's three different options. Each time we get the bill, we get to choose which option we want to take. It could be them take a portion of revenue, it could be us pay, because they have different formulas. The other one is DNA testing, so we pay the labs in Ottawa so much per service. That is predate, preset by Department of Justice. Basically, the province gets a, a cost from the labs in Ottawa, BC now, of what forensic testing is going to cost us. They take the services and the number of population and they download the cost to us. And then the other one is our PROS, which is our records management system, which, which we pay the RCMP for, based on number of users. So it's around $900 per user, per year for license.
Gotcha.
So there's five different topics under law enforcement.
Thanks. I didn't realize that we paid for prosecution.
Yep, so just for soughts. So, and we've tried private in the past, which was double the cost, like a private law firm. So the Crown actually represents us now and, and they came up with a new formula because basically everybody across the province was doing the same initially. It was really high.
A sought is a summary offense ticket.
Yeah, sorry. So speeding ticket, liquor, Protection of Properties Act, offense, anything like that, wildlife, offer of motor vehicle, they, they do the prosecution for those.
Other questions for police? Okay.
Great.
Thank you. From one chief to another. Fire. Like not here right now. Fire chief.
Good evening. Thanks. I'll just go over our additions to the budget this year. Under other is $50,000. That's for the strategic underwriter study that we had money in the budget last year for. However, the item wasn't awarded in time for this year's to be finished, so it's just moved forward to, to next year's. On the rescue and firefighting equipment, we have $38,500. That's to purchase new equipment that's required, that's been either deteriorated or new things coming on board that we feel that the fire department needs to be a little bit more sufficient. And when I say new equipment, I'm thinking, talking, fire hose, different things like that, that they have a lifespan of 10 to 20 years. So once they get to that point, you have to kind of replace that stuff. Under the drone, it's $1,000 and that's, in case there's any kind of a issue repair-wise that needs to be done, it's, it's a little bit of a contingency fund put in there to, to help pay for any repairs or part of the insurance that is on that drone for an accident, if it's, if there is so an accident with it, we have insurance coverage on that drone. So that's what that's all about. And the response trailer, that's the response trailer that the Fire Fighters Association of Bridgewater purchased a couple of years ago that looks after the maintenance of it, basically, for the year. Happened to change tires during the MVIs and different things like that. So, in total, that comes to $91,000 in additions. We did not have any deletions as this year.
Questions for fire chief?
I'm just curious, where, what is the $3,000 in revenue from?
Oh, I didn't even see that here.
It's not there. He's on the other side. They also have the public budget documents.
Okay. The $3,000 is rentals that we do at the fire hall for when somebody wants to come to a wedding or something like that. That's revenue that comes in. It actually is held here. If we need extra for, at the end of the year to do, use for training, we use it. If not, it just stays here in the account and we just move on.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm sorry to make you repeat this. Did you say that the $1,000 is for the new drone and insurance?
No, just the insurance and, and maintenance for that drone. The drone is already bought, paid for in conjunction with the Bridgewater Police Department.
I was, I was concerned that we're paying for insurance on a drone that costs under $1,000.
Other questions? We're going to have some hard-hating questions for the fire chief here. You're still going to make your meeting at 7:00?
No, no. I'm going to stick around and listen to the rest of it.
Sorry. I know we're, I know we're ordering a fire truck this year. Do you know where that fire truck will be coming from? This is a question I get a lot from people. Is it coming from the states or is it coming from not the states?
It all depends on who actually puts the bid on to it. The tender will be going out very shortly to get pricing on it. And depending on who wants to do that, there are manufacturers in Canada. However, the chassis actually does come from the states, but the rest of the truck is built in Canada.
It's built in Canada, okay.
So it's, it's a give and take kind of situation and with the way the tariffs are and everything, we don't know where it's going to be.
Right, okay, early days.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the fire chief?
I'm just curious, I'm sorry, just reminded, like, under firefighting force, it went from 211 last year to 258,000 this year? I'm just wondering what's included in the firefighting force and why that substantial change from last year?
So the question is, firefighting force?
I think it's firefighting force. Last year was 211,000 and this year it's 158?
Just in the baseline, so I think...
It's 208, this proposal.
Oh, sorry, once you add the additions, then you're right, then it's, okay, my apologies. Thank you. Ignored half the spreadsheet.
You kind of scared me there.
That makes more sense.
The strategic underwriters was in last year. We didn't make it a deletion. We just, it kind of shows up as an addition again because it would be weird to make it a deletion and an addition. So it was in the 211 as a baseline plus additions and kind of the exact same thing again.
Makes complete sense, thank you. Sorry for the heart attack.
That's okay. Other questions? Okay. Moving on. Engineering.
Now remember the rule, every time he comes up here, things are supposed to get less expensive.
Perhaps he prepares something. Usually I don't.
See if I can walk around. Okay, so the three, I guess the three main areas or four main areas in the engineering services budget that would be additions, would be, the first one would be the addition of the facility stack. So right now we have three, two full-time facility maintenance stacks and we have one that is part-time or that has been employed for a year and a temporary one. I'm recommending that position be become full-time because we are seeing an increase in the operation and maintenance of all of our buildings. The disaster plan to improve our maintenance plan for those, for all of our facilities. There are a number of capital projects that we're working on in the proposed budget, whether it be the museum, the pool, the BMA, or the public horse garage. And I can't underestimate that it does facilitate the existing staff to take professional developments, time off, sick time, allows for succession plan and redundancy overall. The next one, I keep looking at the screen, I can see it here, would be the, another addition for six months for a capital project coordinator. So we are seeing a very aggressive capital plan this year. So... I had that on the full-time. Thank you. We are seeing the, an increase in capital projects. So the goal this year is, once we hire the other position, which is the DMAT project coordinator, hopefully we'll have a good handle on what should, what are still our deficits in terms of the capital projects management and inspection program. And so at about six-month mark, we, we hope to employ the capital project coordinator. The next one is in terms of the new fleet or vehicles proposed. So in the capital budget, you'll see a number of new vehicles or replacement vehicles. That money is in there for the operation and maintenance of those. And the last one is the temporary traffic lights, very popular. So we are proposing to continue having those operate for at least one more year. I actually covered all my notes. That's all I planned to cover and the other items are just kind of either additions or takeaways that are, are close to, with respect to vehicles and their maintenance.
You ever see, we got our second EV parked downstairs?
Yes, actually, I was actually speaking with the CIO and I seen it roll up. So yes, we did receive that last week. So now we just need to make sure it gets them, gets the number and the, and the radio added to it and then it'll be kind of used on a daily basis with staff.
We've had the same luck as the police, all right? We haven't had any issues with it, no service.
Knock on wood. There's been, other than tires that I'm aware of, we have not really had any, had any issues with it, although I don't have any data's on it, data on it at this point.
Not quite as high mileage as the police.
Correct.
Okay, questions for engineering? Councilor Conklin?
I noticed curb and sidewalk maintenance budgets are decreased. Wondering why?
So, last year, actually the last two years, I tried to have an aggressive plan for capital, for operations in, in terms of curb renewals. But we are seeing is that we're doing most of that under capital, so it's kind of a give and take between operations or capital. So you'll see that this year's in terms of sidewalk replacements and the accompanying curb were over budget, so I'm trying to decrease the operations to reflect the increase in op, in capital.
Okay.
At this point.
So it doesn't mean less is being done, it just means there, it's, more is coming out of the other budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Good, good question. Other questions for Matt? He said all your questions last week, mostly capital.
I plan to stay, stay up here for a while.
Yeah, okay, let's move to wastewater.
Oh, I must, sorry. So the revenue side, thankfully through the efforts of community development, they did receive some funding, housing accelerator fund, which is helping the engineering department model our wastewater system. So we have a better or more accurate model of our wastewater system, moving from the theoretical to the more data-driven or empirical to look at flows. And then with respect to, I think Tammy already covered it, the $30,000 for utility that we're reviewing that. I don't know if I have to really...
Next one's expensive.
Okay.
Colin?
Sorry. So, just making sure I have my other spreadsheet up here. With wastewater, with respect to wastewater, as I said earlier, what we're seeing there is the addition of two staff positions. One I already covered with the capital project coordinator, but the, the other position, which is the DMAT project manager specifically is required by funding to be put in place. And we're currently interviewing for those candidate, interviewing for that position now. The other additions relate to that position and professional development or travel, et cetera. The, the other, the other major or increase is to do with, we are seeing an increase in the operation and maintenance of our wastewater system. So I add, I have added a four, a fourth wastewater operator. This allows for two to be focused on the treatment side of the, of wastewater system and two in the collection side. But it also, as I said earlier, provides the ability for people to take training, professional development, time off, succession plan and redundancy as well. And then we already, so already covered under the revenue would be the, the expenses. So it's a net zero with respect to modeling and the equipment funded through half.
And half being housing accelerator.
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
So many acronyms.
There's so many acronyms, yeah. Questions, Councilor Conklin?
Sorry, Matt. From the slide previous on the engineering services.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so not contained there. So on the other table here, snow clearing? So we are looking at just a baseline of about 440, 444,000. So last, I guess we budgeted for 390,000 this year. And granted, we had a really bad February, so our snow clearing's coming in around 500,000. I guess that 443,950 is just middle of the road between last year or what we budgeted and...
Yeah, they had the conversation with the Director of Finance about where, where that number should be after, after we did the Q3 or the quarter, third quarter forecast. So we did go about the middle of the road based on the new four-year average and understanding that we do have...
100,000.
100,000 in reserve in case we do have a bad winter.
Okay, thanks. So historically, do we know, or can you get that data easily, like the last three years? I just think last year was just such, or sorry, this winter was such an, an anomaly and...
Don't we roll in like a 10-year, were we using a 10-year average or a five-year average?
Four, I think you said.
And I thought that we had, now we had talked about this years ago. We had that really, really bad 2015 winter.
Yeah.
And I thought, we didn't put it into motion or anything, but I thought we vowed to always leave that year... And I thought, we didn't put it into motion or anything, but I thought we vowed to always leave that year in the rolling average. So that if you have three years of no snow, you won't get caught.
But even with salt costs, trucking costs, all that's irrelevant now, right?
Because I know looking at the four-year max during our budget, reviewing the operations for this year was 433,000 or 434. Our four-year min was about 245,000 and our four-year average is 335,000, based on the budget doc, the preparation for this budget.
Okay, so...
We also had the conversation around whether this winter was the new normal. You know, four years ago and now, or 10 years ago and now, between costs of our new five-ton trucks, salt, trucking with salt in. You know, there's just plain cost escalation.
Oh sure, yeah, on the expense side.
And then there's the new normal of ice. So Matt did have it lower, I pushed him to reconsider actually. So if you think the number's too high, it might be my conservative fault.
I'm going to take Matt's side this time.
Never, no, don't, no, take Kim's, always take Kim's. It's the best the staff can do based on the information that we have. But certainly I'd rather always err on the side of caution than to underestimate. So I did, I did appreciate Kim's advice on that matter.
It, sorry.
Yep.
So let's say, okay, so for this year, we're 110,000 short. So where are we funding that from?
We're, our projection for third quarter, which you haven't, well, it's in the public budget document. Our projection's about a $1.5 million surplus for '24, '25, the year-end being done and based on third quarter, not fourth quarter final results. So we'll absorb that cost over rent.
Okay. I still think it's too high. Thank you.
Councilor Conklin?
A question again from the same slide. The, so the facilities, maintenance tech, that's a new position, but I think you said that's replacing a part-time position, so are those...
For last year, I think it was nine months a year, they weren't employed the full-time. We did have a third facility tech come in, so they've been operating under the capital projects they've been assigned to. So right now it's going to, this is the same progression as the other positions, that they were focused on capital. And then once it's been determined that, okay, there is a full need for them, they move to operations. And this is similar to the previous two positions.
So the budget line is 72. I assume that doesn't take into account the savings from no longer having that part-time position? Does that make sense?
Well, things like the museum capital budget to do the external renovations would have had it captured in there. So as those projects end, the, a permanent position would need to be covered by the operating budget for the most part. Depends on what we have online, I guess, for capital for them to do. But the museum was a big capital project. And I think a portion of the wages were allocated to that project, for example.
And that project is slated to extend until June of this coming year. So at least three months of that position will be dedicated to the museum. Understanding that we still have some renovations at the pool that we need to complete, the BMA and the renovations around that. And it is proposed to construct a tire shed for the Public Works Building and they'll be focused on that. However, I didn't capitalize their wages, I put it in operations. Last year would have been, their wages would have been capitalized.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor?
Just want to make sure that I'm tracking between the two documents. And the one that is not on the screen, there's a line for administration in general, 180,513. Is that, that is not the debenture interest rate, that would be under debt repayment.
Sorry, what line was it?
Some wastewater management.
Oh, sorry, did I say, I skipped ahead, didn't I?
Wastewater?
Yeah, no, no.
I skipped back.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Councilor Conklin, back in time.
180,513, it's titled administration in general.
And you're in the public budget document, not the additions, additions?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, that is new debt.
That's new debt, okay.
Yeah. Debt charges note, the 180 is that. Sorry, we have too many places we have to, when you ask a detailed question, we have to go break that down. Is that the new staff?
Two 180s that are close to each other. So this would be the administration in general, which would be, should be the new staff, the DMAT coordinator, project coordinator. So the three positions should be tied to that.
Okay. So it's not new debt?
Yes, yeah, and that's what was in, partly in the additions, the 146 plus all the, for, just for that one. And plus the project manager, all the PD telephone.
Gotcha, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that 180 under that is the debt.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
They're close.
Yeah, the two similar.
Yeah. Other questions, Councilor Newell?
What council's internal cost allocation? I just noticed that its internal cost allocation is minus 300,000. Just curious what that is.
Yes, so currently all our public works and engineering outside of trucks sitting outside this building, all of those, the operating costs, fuel costs for all those vehicles, all lands in the engineering department. And then when we have things like capital projects where we're taking a loader and using it on a project for three weeks, that loader contains with it an hourly rate that gets charged out to that job so that it's not just absorbed all in operating. So if the PSC, so our water utility is using vehicles and equipment, if our capital projects are using that, it's just kind of like...
We're essentially billing back those services to debt.
Not revenue, we're just, we have a very large fleet expense. And then that's kind of offsetting it because some lands in capital, not staying and operating.
Thank you.
It's an odd accounting. We have the same with parks vehicles.
I noticed, yeah.
Just as much smaller number.
Other questions for engineering? Councilor Conklin?
Street cleaning.
Okay.
Is that every public street within the town?
Correct. So the majority of that though would be, like so this year, because we have, have had to use sand, so on our streets, which we normally don't do because of our combined system impacts to our sanitary, but we'll have to go over every street and then, including sidewalks. In a, say last year where we didn't have to actually use sand, so it would have been focused on, the efforts would be in the spring and the fall with leaf cleanup. Would be the majority of times we, and then we'll do ahead of the, any events. So the parade route, so there's some event-specific cleaning that needs to be done too.
Okay, thanks. We don't do any privately-owned parking lots or...
That would be through work for individuals, so we do upon request and we bill them accordingly per the fees policy.
Okay, good, thanks.
Other questions? Okay. Kind of went through wastewater, so transit?
Transit. So really this is the revenue, it's an in and out. We received a grant, the second year of our pilot program to extend our hours. So we received 31,200 and that really is spread in terms of the salaries, which are not shown, but also the impact to the maintenance of our fleet and oil and gas, or sorry, our fuel.
Any questions on transits? Councilor Conklin?
Sorry, I forgot, when does that grant run out for the extended hours?
That's a four, it was a four-year grant and we apply annually.
Okay, 26,000 or something a year, wasn't it?
It was 30, 31, 31,200 was the amount of that grant, was it not?
Yeah, and the, so you probably remember last year because it was prorated.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Other questions on transit?
I guess it would, should be noted that we do have a brand-new line for transit. So we're hoping that we don't have to use it in terms of repair or maintenance to our shelters, but you never know.
I'm getting some nice comments on the, certainly the shelter on North. Councilor Conklin?
On the revenue side, where does our ad sales fall in? Under, I guess it would be admin sales?
Yes.
Yeah.
I know that they're, they are in high demand.
Yes.
I'm not sure when we're due for a review on the rates, but certainly I think...
So we, council's asked us to look at all of our fees this year.
Yeah.
So that, that would be part of that, that review. And we have the bus shelters and, you know, more space to look at for sponsorships. So that 70, 73,000 also includes our transit fares as well, so...
Yes.
So that's, that's both the ad sales as well as fares.
Okay. Thanks.
Normally, normally with respect to the, the revenue side, it's, we're projecting about $50,000 in fare. So $23,000 in revenue from ads.
Okay.
That's without, we haven't, we haven't advertised the advertisement opportunity in shelters, bus shelters yet, so there's a little increase for that.
Yeah, those will do well, I think.
Yeah, I think, personally, I think they're undervalued. Like, like all the businesses advertising, they're getting good bang for their buck on the, on the bus certainly.
Did we split the buses up? Because before it used to be, if you advertised on one, you advertised on the other. And we did talk, and I can't remember where we landed, we did talk about where now we would make it so if you advertise on one, it doesn't mean you get the other. You got to pay more to be on the other, did we?
They are sold as a package currently. That was where we landed with the program when we launched in 2017. But to Councilor Conklin's point, we have not changed any of those rates since the program was launched in 2017. So they are due for a review.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I know that one of those options was splitting it up, so...
Correct.
Advertising on one bus, because they alternate, right? So it would theoretically double our revenue or double the number of people we could advertise to.
That's right, even the Scotiabank Center with their two Zambonies, they had different ads.
My only caution with that is because sometimes we have one bus off the road for an extended period of time. If we don't sell them as a package, we could have an advertiser that feels they're not getting their fair share if we have a breakdown and a bus is offline for three weeks.
Okay, fair enough.
So from that standpoint, there is a logic to sell them as a package.
Okay. That is why staff do research and make recommendations. Council doesn't just go, I know what I want. Thank you, Patrick. Other questions on transits? You got, Councilor Newell?
Sorry, maybe I'm just missing it. Where does the fare show up?
Transit and sales as well.
Oh, it shows up in transit, oh, transit and sales.
Yeah, it's in that 73,000.
Oh, okay.
I'm just referencing the, my quarterly forecast.
So sorry, just remind me, what's the split between those again? Forgive me.
Uh, this year, uh...
50,000 for...
Yeah, 50,000 as well.
50,000 for fares and then, I guess, 23 for ad sales.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, on the parking lots?
So with respect to town center, so that is a, I guess I justified it being one time, but it has been a reoccurring amount since, for a long time now. We spend about $10,000 a year in terms of resurfacing a small section of either the lower or upper section of town center parking lot. And the North Parkade, that is the $10,000 to complete the condition assessment that is currently out to tender now. So we're hoping that we'll have something awarded that meets our budget and awarded that can be completed next, this coming fiscal year. So it is a, one time, we headed in last year, unfortunately staff were not able to complete, get that assessment completed this fiscal, so carried over through operations next.
Questions on... Councilor Newell?
As to the CAO's previous comment, parking permits, would that be reviewed as well as part of the fees?
In terms of the amount?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, that will be, okay. Do we know offhand how many parking permits that we issue on an annual basis, like just looking at the income?
Uh, not offhand, but we could get you that number.
Yeah, okay.
It's almost a daily occurrence in finance.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor McDowell, then Councilor Conklin?
The North Parkade, if we're doing a condition assessment and they come up with work that needs to be done urgently, should there be money in the budget to handle anything that's urgent? I know there's 30,000, I think, or 20,000 that would be there, but I think that's probably the annual maintenance?
I felt there was money in the capital for, for anything urgent, because I think we had a discussion about placeholders, just in case. I just don't have the number off my head right now.
Okay, so there's placeholder for if there's something that needs to be addressed immediately?
I can confirm, I'm on slide 45, but I'm pretty sure there is money in there.
Yeah, that can be a later thing.
Yeah, there's a North Parkade repair improvements, there was a 25, 26, there is 150,000.
Okay, I was going to say 125, I'm getting that mixed up with another project.
Yeah.
Councilor Conklin?
Park, paid parking revenue, that's not in this, right? That falls in under the...
The meter, meter?
Yeah.
Meter revenue goes to police?
Parking is separate.
You get the permit, they get the...
Yeah, okay. So, so I guess, so it's kind of split up. So there's some parking revenue that goes to Bridgewater Police Service. And there is other parking revenue in the form of permits that come to us. So it's, I guess it makes it more difficult to do a proper analysis on, I guess, the cost benefit of having paid parking and how much we should invest in maintenance on these lots and, because I don't think that our paid parking pays for itself, if I recall.
So we have provided information in the past to council on cost of bi law enforcement and...
Yeah.
The revenue that we generate from, from the, both the meters as well as the permits. But, and we wouldn't, we could add to that the maintenance and repair costs that's in our operating budget. And then do a factor for capital to give you an idea with respects to, if you put that out over an annual basis, what's the loss? Because you're probably right.
Yeah.
There would be a loss.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks, that's it.
Did you want that information?
Not for this, no, I mean...
I think parking remains a discussion that we have to have in terms of how we want to address it and the challenges of, you know, whether we open it up to an hour of free parking or two hours and that, you know, I know that causes issues where every time we've, even in December when we have free parking, we have business owners that continue to just fill up all the parking spaces in front of their business, which is nonsensical, but it happens. So it's how do you balance the two? But I know that council hears that all the time from people, how can we can't offer this? There's no such thing as free parking, right? Because you can look at the, one looks at the parking lot budget and the capital budget and taxpayer pays for the shortfall. But I know it's a discussion we need to have.
Parking lot and parking lot.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor?
This isn't in parking, but I know how quickly you're going to leave once you're done. The Bridgewater Memorial Arena, there is electrical services 25,500. Is that actually like replacing wiring?
No, that should be the, based on the operational, of electrical services, operational forecast of electric consumption at the BMA.
Oh, that's how much the power bill is?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Other questions on parking, Councilor Newell?
Um, keeping on the theme of the BMA, is the, I guess, is that parking lot included in the BMA's budget rather than the, I guess, town parking lots?
So the, in terms of the maintenance or repair?
In terms of general maintenance, plowing, that sort of stuff.
That's in the arena budget at this point. Or BMA budget, we need a new name.
Yeah. No one wants to name it, you can set a price.
Sponsorship opportunities.
Kim will set a price.
Sponsorship opportunities, that is, that's a revenue driver. Um, and then the other, my other question is, I guess, what constitutes as maintenance? Like, does snow clearing include in that or is that in our snow clearing budget? Is...
Snow clearing is, so staff does do their best in terms of, on a daily basis, with work orders to allocate whenever we go there. It's not always in the, in the case of snow removal on a snowstorm, easy. So we do make, do a reconciliation at the end of the year to specifically the BMA for snow clearing or if we do parking lot maintenance, which there hasn't been a lot done there.
Forgive me, I... Forgive me, I, I, I guess I just mean for like, or town parking lots in general. If, like, what constitutes as maintenance versus does, like, just something as like individual snow clearing, does that fall under the maintenance budget or?
Does snow clearing fall under the maintenance budget for all the other parking lots? And there is a line, I guess, specifically to, to that for, because that would be completed by public works.
So under the Bridgewater Memorial, the maintenance and repairs includes snow clearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other questions? Parking? Moving to parks?
Let's see, yes. So only two items as an addition, one time, so materials. So that really is the refurbishment of the existing septic tank pumping system that is, services the Kinsman Field. So it does need new pumps and piping for that. And the electrical needs to be redone. And then fifteen thousand for parkland sanitation or tree maintenance that is required. We're seeing a number of requests on border trees with adjacent properties as well. We're, I think our parks are being, the increase of use. So we're getting a lot more complaints or disconcerns about a hazardous tree that we are, we are following up.
Well, more use of parks is a nice problem to have. Questions on parks? Counsel Coughlin.
Parks maintenance budget is decreased over seven percent. Why is that?
If it's, it's just a general reflection of the historical values, I would think. Just going to see if there's anything that sticks out.
Yes, it went from one forty-three and then it was projected to be one fifty-three. The baseline is one seventeen, but the proposed budget's one thirty-two. So eleven thousand dollar drop from last year's budget. Was, was the woolly adelgid lumped into park maintenance last year and pulled out this year? So it was always separate, right?
I can figure out which, which things it is.
Yeah, I don't see that on mine.
It's just in the public one. Was it an addition from last year? Like, no, because that shows a deletion.
I have to go to my individual.
We have to dig a little deeper.
I will say that we, staff are reviewing all of the accounts for parks to, because we, we budget individually for every park. So you can imagine the number of accounts or repeat accounts that we could have. So through efforts with finance, our park staff and engineering, we're looking at amalgamating most of those accounts. So putting lawn, lawn care and labor together, but also lumping some of our projects, those that are waterfront properties versus what we call mini parks versus active parks or trails to help kind of guide what our operation and maintenance costs, whether it be labor or just maintenance costs themselves. Because I think there's a little bit of room there to maneuver.
So essentially, with our insurance policy decreasing substantially, the substantial decrease is general liability. And general liability gets allocated a bunch of different places. And there's a lot of allocation to parks because we have twenty, thirty parks.
Thirty-six parks.
So we did our best to estimate what departments were affected. And that one, that's the line that it's in and it stands out significantly. There, like, when I look at it compared to what it was budgeted, you know, it's a very, very significant drop there when we allocated that down.
So it's not a decrease in actual maintenance?
No, it went from fifty-three to twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Not a decrease in maintenance, just a.
Good.
You, Counsel for your.
Yeah, just had a question about the park at four forty-seven King, the corner of Dufferin. If, just noticing the last week that there's some railroad ties debris looking unsafe at that park. I just wondered if that's, if you have that on your list of park maintenance?
It is, it is on our radar to inspect. But I do know that with the amount of vegetation, it's not something we want to go in there and just start ripping and tearing.
Okay.
We do have to look at that park. And I understand that the, the pit or the park improvement plan will become the council's to seek direction on which direction we want to go.
Okay.
But that is certainly, we received a few complaints about that park.
Yeah.
But it is something that staff will need to make sure we properly planned in terms of a new retaining law for that area.
Okay, great.
And the adjacent property owner, we'd have to work with as well.
Right.
Counsel Coughlin.
Would that park be considered a pocket park?
That one would be a pocket park.
Pocket park?
So just in the public documents, finance has done a great job at making the, the new accounts or the listings for parks, so the active parks and trails, leisure parks, playgrounds, sports fields, waterfront parks and pocket parks. Again, just to streamline accounting for those parks and then allocation of staff.
Okay, so to follow up with, with the classification of each, each type of park. So for sports fields, for example, we have a proposed expenditure or projected expenditure just under seventy-four thousand for the year. And that would be from just standard park maintenance, field maintenance, mowing, doing the lines, da, 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 whatever.
Reshaping after every ball game or whatnot, the operator goes up the next day to reshape all of those fields.
Chasing loose dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And the, under the revenue side, grants, donations and fees, the top line. Out of the projected fourteen thousand for this year, how much of that would be from fees?
That is a good question, and I would think a majority of that would be from fees, fee use. But I'm, I'm not as quite familiar with the revenue side of our fields.
And, and typically, we would only be renting out the sports fields? Do we generate any fees from any of the other perks? Probably not.
Generally not. I do know, you know, the odd time we've had a wedding.
Okay, yeah.
You know, there's various events that have fees, an insurance component, because if they don't have insurance, they have to purchase insurance through our insurer. There's all kinds of, we don't charge a lot for, for any of our rentals.
So of, of looking at my Q, my quarter three forecast, approximately ten thousand of that would be from field maintenance. I'd have to do a little bit more digging on the other five.
All right, so just, yeah, so straight up, so let's just say we generate about ten thousand from renting out our sports fields and there's at least seventy-four, seventy-five thousand in maintenance. That doesn't even include any of this other stuff there that you can kind of tie some of it to, so. All right. Thank you. Other questions on parks? Arena?
Which is the BMA.
Which is, yeah.
Yes.
Former BMA.
And that's just a debenture interest, and I don't speak to those.
Yeah, they're just significant projects there had been in the budget with debt financing. So that's why the debenture interest is showing as an addition because it was for new debt.
Questions on arena? Pat's gonna sit down in a second.
I did want to circle back to Deputy Mayor McDonald's question on the wastewater general and admin. It also included the thirty thousand for the wastewater utility in addition to the staffing that was under that general and admin. General and admin was like a late addition to reorganize that wastewater category. So it was a new one for us to.
That makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I'm not for, right? I'm sure he'll come back. All right, down to planning. You're often here with your planning hat on. You see it's energized Bridgewater or.
Energized is at the end and, you know.
Planning it is.
It is. It's great, great to start with planning. Okay, so really, for the planning, as you see with the additions, it's primarily related to the amazing Housing Accelerator Fund grant that we received. So that's the revenue in. And then you'll see there's additions in terms of salaries, some general admin and the other commitments within that. So there's some commitments towards some studies, towards affordable housing projects once we bring forward the pieces of the action plan related to that. And then the other two, the other addition is for wayfinding. So with the opening of the new interchange, we need to add to our wayfinding signage around town to help bring people into the center of town coming off of the new exit. And the only deletion on here is related to the greenhouse gas inventory work that was completed. It was a one-time addition last year. That work is wrapping up and there will be a report and recommendation coming forward in the next fiscal year.
Questions on planning? Then we will move on to recreation.
Okay.
Sorry.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Speaking of wayfinding, I like the new street signage, the blue signs. When do we expect to have, like, all of them converted over? Like, the green ones gone, blue ones are here?
I'm gonna ask Matt to join on that. That's not related specifically to the wayfinding, so.
Well, well played.
Thanks.
Sorry.
So was that thirty seconds? A minute thirty seconds?
I was just writing notes. So at this point, staff is taking the direction that we're doing it through attrition. So if, if we see a sign that we have to replace one that is damaged, we replace that and any ones, the other ones in the intersection. We don't have a line specifically to do it over a three-year program or whatnot. There has been some discussions with community developments, because I know lots of ones with Nick. He loves them too. I think most people do. We just haven't put money specifically for that one, but we can.
Thanks. Counsel Newell?
I am just curious, is it, like, community development was an annual budget, I guess, initially two ninety-three, then it went projected ninety-eight and now we're proposing fifty-three? I'm just curious what.
Sorry, where are you exactly? Please, please direct me more to which you're looking at.
I'm in the, I guess, the public document, page thirty-nine, under planning services. Forgive me, maybe I've jumped too far ahead.
No, so you're under planning services?
Yes, my apologies. So planning services is under expenditures and then it's community development.
Yes.
That one, I'm sorry.
So that is a grouping of, thank you, I appreciate the additional direction there. That's a grouping of various accounts and primarily relating to the, we had a series of, of projects, some that are wrapped up, like the flood, flood risk work, others that are not. So this year we had two hundred and, I'm just gonna pull up my own computer.
We've got a lot of community.
Q three report. Well, yeah, there's, you, you have detailed questions. We have to get you the details. And so that relates to five, two, four. Right, okay, so. We had in, yes, we had two hundred thousand dollars in the budget this fiscal year to support the development charges work, which we have not spent most of that money yet because we needed to do the wastewater model first. We needed to ensure that we had that model to feed into the larger development charges work. So that is being rebudgeted next year, but being funded through the Housing Accelerator. So it has been moved in the budget.
So that's, that's down under the five hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred?
That's right. Yep.
As an addition.
Now I don't know what I'm looking at.
Is that?
Well, I guess, so what, that's about two hundred thousand-ish that has been moved?
Hundred and fifty.
What, a hundred and fifty?
For the development charges.
Mm-hmm. And then we still have fifty thousand proposed here, so it's still, I guess, like a projected was, a projected ninety-eight. So I'm just wondering.
You're looking, sorry, I need, I need five screens to be able to answer your questions.
I probably also, if I could ask like a concise question.
Okay, so you're wondering, because in this year's budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, it had two hundred and ninety-three.
Uh, that was annual budget and projected, I guess, was ninety-eight.
Right.
And then, but this year we proposed budgets fifty-three.
That's right.
So just what's the logic?
What is the logic?
That's just, that's, that's, that's my question.
Right, so what I'm telling you is that we had two hundred thousand, so now I've got to flip screens here. So just bear with me. So we are projecting.
So you had two projects in that category. There is the floodplain modeling at fifty thousand and the development charges of a hundred and fifty. Floodplain's done, the development charges of a hundred and fifty, Jessica budgeted under the Housing Action Plan as an addition. So then, so that, that takes that, that two hundred thousand away. This year there's fifty-three thousand and what's entailed in that number?
So that's where, I'm sorry, do you have like a paper copy that I could see of the? Thank you, it will be small.
I need to look at all three things, sorry.
Like when talking about the, so the projections, so we said we didn't do development charges, but we did flood risk in twenty-four, twenty-five. But also we had council approval to reallocate some of development charges to some work Donna was doing as well. So that's why the projection of ninety-three.
Yeah.
We used the flood risk plus a little bit of development charges. That's why the ninety-three. The two hundred and ninety was regular community development plus those two strategic initiatives, two hundred thousand and fifty thousand for flood risk. So that, that's twenty-four, twenty-five planned, twenty-four, twenty-five actual. None of those strategic plans exist in that line for twenty-five, twenty-six. Flood risk done, development charges is on a different line now.
So that line presently right now just entails the fifteen thousand, I think it is, for wayfinding? And then you have thirty-eight thousand for other?
So in that grouping of accounts, we have a small budget for consulting, we have wayfinding, we have the special planning initiatives, which generally reflects council's strategic priorities that we're working on, open space activities and heritage activities. So it is a grouping of those accounts that then shows up as community development. So that's where the fifty-three comes in. That includes the fifteen thousand over and above the baseline budget for wayfinding. Okay. The others have all been rebudgeted. All right.
Counsel Coughlin.
Regional inspection services, that's fire and building?
Yes, it is.
Would that be consistent if it was in-house here, the costs?
It is.
Yeah.
Probably.
So this cost includes, Jessica has in here, I think, believe the transition cost. So we, we had budgeted last few years eighty-five thousand, which included scanning documents and software.
Oh, okay.
So that money hasn't been spent, so that's brought back in there.
Yeah.
And we have looked at the billings.
Yeah.
And the costs are lower. There's some, we also, there's capital and a few other things in that number, but operationally, yeah, it's lower.
Yeah.
Other questions on planning? How about recreation?
Okay. Okay. So we received the grant from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities to support our Hemlock Woolly Adelgid project, project to beat the bug. So we received two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars for over two years for that grant. So what you're seeing in the grant's HWA is half of that money that will be put in for year two. We are also, Modal has indicated they would like to continue the fee-for-service relationship that they, that we have with them, where they have hired our Hemlock staff to start the work for their Hemlock conservation work. So that, while there were, it will be sort of budget approval dependent, but we included it in the budget, assuming that things will continue to go forward. And then, yes, we have a carryforward of a grant that we received this year for community gardens. And so right now, the, the title of that revenue account is Helping Nature Heal Grant because they've been providing support over the past almost ten years. But we are broadening and hoping to attract additional revenue, such as the grant that we applied for partly through this past year. In terms of the expenditures, again, it's primarily related to the Hemlock project, so related to staffing for year two, the, the costs of the work itself associated outside of staffing, as well as the modal wages and modal, modal costs. And then the, the real addition is to pilot the recreation access for adults. We had tried to bring that forward a number of years ago. It was in the budget to be grant-dependent. We're proposing that it is funded by the town. It's a very small amount, that won't go very far, but modal. a very small amount, that won't go very far. But Modal brought in a successful, what they're calling Pro Fund, which is like Pro Kids but for adults. So we are pitching that maybe we can try to do something similar and see what the uptake is. And then the deletions that you see there are really related. We had pitched a position last year unsuccessful, so we've got to take out that one-time addition that got left in last year, as well as removing grants that we had received for the community gardens.
Recreation access for adults is only five thousand dollars, but it's coming to the advisory to figure out how to try to get more funds into that, that account because we're not meeting the, the needs for the youth. Does it make sense to add to the program when we don't have the current program under control yet?
The current program that we have is for youth.
Right.
Right. We have had many requests in this past year for adults. I, I can't tally it up because we didn't have a program, but we've had a fair number of requests. And so this is sort of a test the waters. As I understand it, I'm not entirely sure, I don't have the details in terms of where we're at within this fiscal year. I know that we spend every dime that we get for Pro Kids. We did just receive two thousand dollars more from the United Way than we had applied for, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to continue to find additional money to support youth programs as well.
Counselor Colwell.
Has, I, I, not certain. I think maybe there was an effort this year to increase the fundraising for Pro Kids. Was that successful?
Yes.
It hasn't started.
Pardon?
That hasn't started.
No, we have actually, I think there's a desire to do, I'm just gonna grab my projection here. We did, we haven't found, yes. So we budgeted only twenty-five hundred of revenue, additional revenue from fundraising, and we have almost doubled that this year, from making a lot of our own recreation events as fundraising events, from doing a lot more activities of actively soliciting. But we haven't done a big, like going after additional grants or sponsorship of Pro Kids or anything like that, which I believe is what the park's Recreation and Active Transportation Committee was talking about, was a more focused and targeted effort.
An effort to meet the need.
Yeah.
However, we can do that.
Great.
Counselor Wana.
What regards to grants to organizations and just looking through annual history, has there been an increase to that funding allocation recently?
Last year, there was a fifteen thousand dollar increase to support recurring operational grants for organizations.
That's kind of over the pace of this year, that'd be occurring in the number of.
You're welcome.
Other questions on recreation? Moving on to pool, outdoor pool.
All right. So, right. Sorry, just looking at the additions and deletions here. The twenty-seven thousand five hundred addition and, or sorry, revenue and expense is related to the carryforward of the REC Facility Development Grant and Accessibility Grant that we received for upgrade safety and accessibility upgrades to the outdoor pool. So those were started last year before the season. We were unable to complete them before season end, so we received an extension to the, to the grant to be able to carry it forward into this coming year. So we have a work plan to complete them before this new twenty-twenty-five swim season. And then the, right, the public swim fees. Why do we have that deleted? Sorry, I forgot to look that up. Last year, we received enough sponsorship to make the pool free. We are hoping for that again this year. We don't have everything confirmed yet. Sorry, I have too many windows open because they're all in different budget documents.
So should that really be a deletion then? If the goal is to, if the goal is free public swims, then should it not remain in the budget?
Your revenue would go up to offset.
But on the, on the document that's on the screen, it shows free public swims, four thousand dollars coming off, right? Revenue's being deleted. But if the goal is to have free swims, then you require that four thousand dollars, and that shouldn't be in deleted.
Right. So it was adjusted to reflect the increased sponsorship to make the pool free.
Oh, so it's instead of it, okay, so it's just lumped in with the?
Yeah, yeah. So there is an adjustment between sponsorship and pool fees.
All right. Other questions on the pool? Down to museum?
Okay. So the museum might look a little wonky compared to years past. Last year's budget was highly ambitious from a revenue perspective. And many of those grants were unsuccessful, which is why they are in the deletion column. There was also a moving around where some money was received through the Friends of the Desperse Museum Society, FDPM Society. And so it looks like a shift because we're actually, it was recorded under a provincial or federal grant, but it actually comes from the society. So we are putting the money where it's actually supposed to be coming from. We also had a carryforward from unspent grants related to the Around the Table, so we are anticipating to carry forward some of that in to the next fiscal year. And we have proposed in the Wild Carding Mill additional, so it would be cost shared, but an additional five thousand dollars from the Wild Carding Mill Administration to support strategic planning and some, some efforts of upbringing together the cultural services work that we're doing now that we have made the structural shift. And this is the first year I'm standing up here about the museum budget. So it will reflect it with an increase in funding from the Wild Carding Mill over to the museum to support that work. And then the deletion, or sorry, the expenditures, we are proposing a part-time fifty percent cost-share curator position with, between the carding mill, which is funded out of, I'll get to that in a minute, but that will be funded out of the carding mill budget, because we do not have a curator, a trained curator on staff, and have been relying upon grant-funded positions for the past number of years. And it's quite, we are finding it challenging from a management of the collection perspective, not having success with some of those grants to be able to bring that skill in. It, it puts the museum at risk, so we're proposing a part-time casual position while it gives us time to figure out the, the long-term strategic plan and resourcing for that. There's also some additions, again, carryforward of the Around the Table Grant, and to complete the work of the rebranding of the museum facility and the work that council started under its previous strategic plan, proposing some money to support the renaming and rebranding process that had been initiated.
Questions on the museum? Can you, is there an update on the mold remediation where that is?
I thought it was. Well, it was mostly completed, but I'm going to ask Patrick first.
Is it all done though? I wasn't sure it was completely done though. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
No, so the initial mold remediation project to clean the collection was completed last year with success. We have also, through the Sustainable Communities Fund, obviously there's been a major renovation to the building, the drainage ditch that goes around the perimeter, as well as the new insulation and siding, which will help to secure the environment inside and deter mold from reblooming in the future. Having said that, we have increased humidity weather-wise, so this is a factor that is going to be something we're going to have to monitor ongoing. And I know that that's part of the driving ambition behind having a part-time curatorial position, as well as to have a person who can monitor the collection on a regular basis and ensure it stays in good health, and identify issues early rather than having to remediate at a more significant cost in the future. Okay.
We had a, a grant-funded position this past winter, and when that individual was preparing to put on a display of our collection, they found one of our items with mold on it, so they remediated it at that time. So it is, as Patrick said, it's going to be an ongoing piece. There's some things, it was on a fabric dress from the eighteen hundreds, and they said, you know, if we were regularly turning the collection and ensuring that things were, were moved around, as, as somebody in that position would be, then we would likely not be. Since we've spent all that time and effort on the mold remediation, now there's ongoing work that needs to be done to ensure that it continues and the collection is cared for. We do house, I've learned that we do house some of the collection from the Wild Carding Mill at the Desperse in the off-season, and as part of that agreement that we're in with the province of Nova Scotia, we are responsible for the collection at the Carding Mill, and that's why we're, we're positioning this as a part-time, shared position between the two. And the, the province has already given a preliminary agreement to that with the submission of the preliminary budget. So, in fact, I think we're getting our first. Yeah, I think it's actually done. They've approved.
Questions? There will be other opportunities, obviously, to come back to these. This is not like one-and-done budget night, so just as questions come up. Yes, Counselor Colwell.
Are you, are you done now?
I have the Carding. Want me to move on?
No, sorry. I, no, I just wanted to ask you something before you left.
I still have the Carding Mill and Energize to go through. Is this related to anything that we've already talked about?
Yes.
Ask your question now.
Okay, go for it. I'm ready. I hope.
Okay, so for the swimming pool, our projected expenses are looking like one hundred, what, one hundred thirty thousand for next year? Now.
For next year?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So just looking back, twenty-two, twenty-three, total expenses for the pool then was just a little under sixty-seven thousand. So I noticed like salaries have gone up from thirty-seven to over sixty thousand. And building maintenance has, has increased, not quite proportionately, but increased as well. Meanwhile, our revenue has just kind of flatlined. I guess, why the increase in the salaries? Did we have to increase FTE or our complement?
So we, for the last six years, we have contracted the LCLC to provide the lifeguard, the staffing requirements. We've had increased use at the pool, so we've had many days where we've had to have the maximum number of lifeguards on duty. Minimum wage has gone up significantly since, over the last four years. And in order to be attractive, to retain and attract lifeguards, salaries are above minimum wage. So the salaries are the largest space. We have consistently been receiving grants to offset the increase in the maintenance costs. It is an aging facility. It was built in nineteen seventy when the pool opened. The, the maintenance and the increase in the maintenance costs are all related to the building. In twenty-nineteen, we did a big overhaul to the, the pool itself. However, it is a, a dynamic environment, and we have had additional maintenance that we've had to do to that, like taking the, recocking all the joint lines and things like that. So that still causes, you know, has, has additional costs associated with it. The costs for staffing and running the pool have been big. We have been increasing our, our sponsorship, however, over the past number of years, and we're, we're hoping to increase it again this year. So we did have twenty thousand dollars a year in sponsorship for a long time, and last year we had thirty thousand three hundred in sponsorship. Mind you, it was offset by not charging people any, any cost to attend and go to the pool.
Does that help with your question?
Yeah, it's just getting more and more expensive to operate.
I think that's a tagline for everything.
And it seems to coincide with when we joined up with the LCLC.
I think it would have happened anyway. Again, the LCLC increased what they pay lifeguards significantly because we were losing lifeguards quickly, so we would have to match them. And then standards change, right? So you have to have more lifeguards per person on the, the pool. I'm sure Counselor Fujir can speak to that one, one that I can.
Yeah.
We've also had to shift the, the management model for the pool as well because of the increase in issues and ongoing maintenance and things like that, that the facility has needed, not just the staffing oversight. So that's another piece to it as well, having a supervisory role, which again, we're paying more for.
Counselor Fujir.
Yeah. So having the pool as a, a free complimentary service was, was very welcomed in the community. I know it was very positive from the general public. And I know you keep track of the users of the pool, and I'm just curious if you know, maybe you don't know offhand, but just like last year, as you mentioned, we had to increase lifeguards because of, you know, some days it obviously was very busy, whether it be a weekend or evening swim. But it would be, you know, beneficial, I think, to know sort of if it was up twenty percent or, you know, just, so I think it would help knowing that, okay, if it was up twenty percent, therefore, the salary ratio was justifiable, knowing that we're providing a, a service to the community for maybe those that, you know, couldn't afford to use the pool, so it's.
Yeah, we have some challenges with the numbers.
Okay.
So I will get that, and I will share that back. And the reason that I say that is because, so last year, we can tell you, we have, we have good numbers, we can tell you when we had wait lists, how many times the pool was at capacity.
Okay.
And we had a wait list, so we can share that with you. The year prior, we made, and the, and the years before that, we did a lot of, I'm looking for the right word, but when it was really hot, over thirty degrees, we did a beat the heat swim.
Yeah.
And so on beat the heat swims, the staff of the day did not track numbers because it was free, so they stopped tracking. So we had an estimate for those days, and, and so it, things aren't, it's not apples to apples in a comparison year over year, because they just estimated how many people were likely there on those beat the heat swims versus having the actual numbers, which we do for this year. But I can certainly get that information and share it back, because we do track that.
Counselor Colwell.
Thanks. Yeah, so to follow up from Counselor Fujir's point, so unlike our transit where we offer free ridership, we don't have to do a corresponding increase for salaries because it's just one, one driver for the, for the bus. So we're only losing on the revenue there. But with the pool, every, say, five-dollar drop in swimming fees because of the free swim, you know, we could be increasing our salary, salary expense by, say, two dollars or something. So it's kind of hitting us twice there. I mean, I'm all for the free swims, but I, I don't see these numbers improving down the road. Like as these free swims get more popular, we have to have a fully-staffed, staffed pool, and, you know, if it means it's twenty-two or twenty-four dollars an hour, then, you know, that's going to drive everything up. So I think that we need to look at this free swim thing a little bit more closely, see how we can get kind of some kind of community sponsorship on the free swims or corporate sponsorship. I mean.
Well, I think that's, that's what they are doing.
That's what we had last year.
That's what we had last year was free, the free swims were. That's what we had last year was free, the free swims were sponsored last year.
So they were funded.
I thought that we, I thought you just opened it up for the last...
No, it was free for the entire season last year because we obtained $30,000 in sponsorship before the pool opened for the season. So we came to you in May of last year, or, sorry, the previous council, in May of last year, to request that the pool be free because we had achieved that level of sponsorship that was the level of sponsorship from the year before plus the estimated revenue from people paying at the door.
Yeah. So it offset the...
Exceeded the user fee.
Yeah, and the difference is there because with charging, the number of people who come into the pool is far less. So there's a, there is a trade-off there. We can certainly crunch those numbers, bring you back a report, and provide some options for how you want to move forward. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, though, so...
So typically, we've been receiving about 30,000, 20, between 25 and 30,000 in sponsorship for the...
No. 20,000 was a commitment made in 2016.
Yep.
It extended to 2021 because the pool was closed for a year. So we extended that. So that was a five-year agreement that Town Council entered into with the Oregans Subaru, who was the naming sponsor, at $10,000. The Bridgewater Barracudas swim team, who was paying $5,000, $7,500, I think? Or the United Way and the Bridgewater Barracudas did the balance of the 10,000. So we had $20,000, so we had $100,000 over five years that became over six years because the pool was closed for that first year of COVID. And so that was $20,000. We've since managed to increase it through to $30,000. We have a variety of different sponsorship opportunities, from naming rights to the cooldown zone. So last year, Michelin sponsored the cooldown zone, they had a sign on the fence, they had branded shade sales, and then we had different sponsors for different days of the week. Some purchased two days of the week, others purchased just one, and I can certainly, again, we can bring all that forward to you in a report. We will, anyway. We need to come with a new agreement for the, entering into an agreement for the LCLC to provide that staffing. So I can bring this level of detail to you in that report if you wish. Yes?
Thank you.
I think we're down to Cardy Mill now.
All right, back to museums. Okay. That's for the pool. Sorry, making my notes on my wrong budget page here. Okay, so the Cardy Mill, as you know, the dam and the facility suffered significant impact. Oh, right, thank you. They suffered some impacts during the 2023 floods, so they closed. The mill itself closed after that day and has not yet reopened. Where, whether the facility itself gets to reopen this season is still a question mark. But the town of Bridgewater is in an agreement with, an operating agreement with Nova Scotia Museums to operate that facility on behalf of the province. So we take direction from them. The draft budget that was submitted to you was submitted to the province as well. They gave the green light, but they also recognize that it's subject to council approval. So in terms of additions in revenue, there is, we learned that there is a grant program available for, only for Nova Scotia museums. We intend to apply for a $10,000 grant to help fund a celebration of grand opening, should we get to reopen the facility, and to try to address the ugly green berm that is there for the foreseeable future to protect from any future flood events while they establish, assess the dam and the facility. We are also proposing to fund additional items from the surplus that we currently have. So that includes, under the expenditures, the 50% of the part-time curator, additional program activities, as well as an increase to the admin fee that goes to the Des Berzay Museum for that strategic planning that we're looking at. The reduction, the deletion of 2400 is removal of an iPad that was purchased for admissions, et cetera, for the Cardy Mill.
Any questions on Cardy Mill? Okay, cemetery.
Matt has to come up for the cemetery, and then I'll come back for Energize.
Yeah, or we can...
Or we can do Energize and come back.
Let's just do Energize, then we'll come back to cemetery. It's not like, it's not dead last.
Yeah, so really...
I don't think that's funny.
You should be ashamed of that.
Mark gets it.
Oh, dear.
It's not your finest joke.
No.
It's not bad.
It's not that long.
No.
We're not in a bad joke.
All right, we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the opposite. Let's get Energized here. So as was said earlier, we are moving into the last year of the Energize Bridgewater Smart Cities project. So the addition and deletion relates to our grants. There is a, sorry, I'm a little distracted by whatever's going on over here. It's okay, it's okay. I will find my, my, right. So final year for the funded project. The changes in this budget are really about adjusted baselines, but we also wanted to show the major changes to the project, so there's some additions and deletions, and it's really about what work do we need to do in this last year of the project, and what work are we no longer doing in the last year of the project because it's been complete? Something that changed between when the budget was submitted and now is that we actually have an extension till the end of September to complete any expenses related to our ACOA funding, related to Bridgewise, our energy management information system. So there could be a little bit of a shift between the reduction, the deletion of grant, ACOA grant, and the consultants, the $190,000. So they would, they would balance each other out if there was one. So we're still sorting that out.
Questions on Energize? No, we just kind of discussed Energize a few council meetings ago, so kind of stay tuned on some of this. Just want to make sure if you had any questions as we deal with technology issues over here. Should we have that in the budget?
We might need a budget in the display.
Counselor Fujirin, did you break your display?
I thought it was the mouse.
I was, that's where I thought.
That's where I thought.
That's what I thought.
Stacy stood up on his chair.
As soon as I saw Tanner get up and go that direction, I knew it wasn't a mouse because she was going on that. Okay. So yes, any questions on Energize Bridgewater? No, now we will go to cemetery then. Now it's Matt's turn.
I'll give you that.
Actually, I forgot about this one. So yeah, the special projects as a revenue, I believe through the efforts of community development, we've completed the mapping project itself that you were just getting?
Yes.
Right. So that, so that gets removed, as well as the removal from the revenue, sorry, the removal from both revenue and the additions. So really with cemetery, it's just the replacement of a lawnmower. We usually do one every few years. Actually, we did one last year, and we have to do one again this year, so hopefully we won't have to do one in the next two.
Questions, Counselor Cocklin?
General maintenance, aside from mowing, what else? Snow clearing?
Yes, so that would cover, yes, the, because the grave openings are separate, so it would be snow clearing and lawn care, depending on, I know that spring and fall would do significant cleanups at both in that location, and then after that, it would just be mowing and general maintenance, and then we'd have snow clearing for the rows, so not a lot there.
Yep. Do we have any idea, like, how much of that is attributed to mowing? Like, is it fair to say, like, at least half?
The, I know that every year I try to get that number right when it comes to mowing versus labor, and I believe this year it flipped. So I think we had 35,000 in labor and around 45 or 50 in mowing, or it could be the opposite. And every year seems to flip depending on the weather. If it's really rainy weather, then we do more mowing, then we do maintenance, or we do the opposite. I don't have those numbers.
You have, for this year, 35 in mowing and 50 in labor.
Oh, I got it right.
For '25, '26.
Sorry, how much in mowing?
35,000 in mowing and 50,000 in labor.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Other questions on cemetery? Yeah, I think you have a question on...
No, no, just thinking about, you know...
About cemetery?
Roomba.
Oh, oh, ah, yes, Counselor Tanner's Roomba lawnmower. I don't know if the terrain would work for that.
Maybe better on sports fields.
Definitely better on sports fields.
I've been to their website a couple of times. They do do cemeteries.
Do they? It wouldn't be able to get up the, up the tiers, though.
Yeah.
But for sports fields and, like, Shipper's Landing, and they go at, they go at night because they're electric, so it doesn't wake up anybody. In the morning, it's all done. Counselor Cocklin?
Sorry, another question. On the sales side, are we looking at reviewing those fees as well?
They would be part of our...
Yep.
We did do a change to the fees last year on that.
Yes, when we were having it with which level.
Yeah, the penthouse versus...
So there were some changes very recently on the columbarium.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
You're up. On to the next stage.
The one thing that's not covered, I think, in the slides is the town's contribution to the Liberal County Lifestyle Center. So the board is tentatively scheduled to review budget on Thursday night this week and make your recommendations to the council. So as Kim had noted, the baseline has been adjusted to add 200,000 extra in based on the forecast that we were trending up to this point, anyway, for the budget for the LCLC for this current fiscal year. So that would bring the contribution from 725,000 last year to 925,000 this year. And again, the board is meeting Thursday night, so we'll probably have a better handle on it, but based on preliminary drafts, that's what it's looking like, it's around there.
Yeah, so we'll get more information. So, yeah.
So will that be presented to us by...
The board will be recommending that budget to the council, so the councils have to approve that budget, and it will be presented, yeah. So we can ask for the acting or interim general manager to come and present the budget if we so desire, or the board members can speak to that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, that was a question I had there beginning of the night when we could expect budget from the LCLC. So that'd be Monday then, I guess.
Yes.
Cool.
You'll get that as soon as we get that. Okay.
All right. So we've kind of gone through the departmental budgets, but there's some other parts of the budget just to highlight, I guess, and also review some of the topics we've discussed in previous capital and wastewater rate-setting meetings. So this just gives you an idea of the operating reserve, the balance currently, so we're projecting to have $21.4 million in the operating reserve as of March 31, 2025. Once year ends done, we funded all the capital that's finished, that was proposed to be funded through reserves and so on. And so this is actually projecting out, for the most part, the capital we're going to use the reserves for. So there's quite a bit of it that's designated, whether that be for water tower, Exit 12A projects, very specifically capital for the most part. And so we are projecting that balance to be down to 14.4 million as of March 31, 2026. We know that it's been artificially high because we've been putting money over there to pay for capital projects, waiting for them to be done. Fortunately, we've had operating surpluses for a few years that have enabled us to build up those reserves to use for capital, so that's a positive. So this is just kind of a summary of which ones we're projecting to increase and which ones we're projecting to decrease. So some of the ones that are increasing in balance would be interest reserves, so we have interest just in a separate reserve all on its own. We're expecting the marketing levy in '25, '26 to come into reserve. The 200,000 in the police budget that's transferred to reserve annually, and the wastewater betterment charges that are collected through the engineering department. Again, so those are the main things, as well as, sorry, special purpose tax reserve. That's not actually in the operating reserves, has its own little special one off to the side, but we're now collecting more than the principal and interest payment, so we're putting that aside, which will enable us to essentially have the money collected to pay those loans off early. In addition to that, for the most, oh, sorry, and the 1.1 million from the wastewater reserve, or from the wastewater surplus that will be going into reserve in '25, '26. The rest of it's just using, again, for capital projects, so that ends with 14.4 million, assuming the capital that are projected to be funded this way are completed in '25, '26. In addition, we have a capital reserve. So our capital reserve, we don't tend to transfer a lot of funds in during the year because it's very restrictive in what you can use it for, then you can only use it for capital. So if we had to fund something from operating, we actually don't have the ability to pull funds out of capital reserve for that. So the main things that go in there would be when the town sells property, or sells an asset. When we sell an asset, we have to put the proceeds in the capital reserve, and that's according to the MGA. So that is going in there. In addition, gas tax funding goes in there, and then we fund projects with the gas tax funds. So we're estimating 725,000 in gas tax funding to be received in '25, '26, but between projects carrying forward and the fact that some projects that we were using gas tax for, where it's no longer eligible due to federal stacking rules, so we couldn't use it for something we had previously used it for, or a project may just not have proceeded. We've built up a little bit of a gas tax balance that's more than just one year, so when we talked about the capital budget, we talked about getting, using those gas tax funds up. So there's more of those allocated to the '25, '26 year than the normal 725. And we did talk about that previously. Again, just bringing back that 10-year capital budget summary, so you can see, you know, the primary high ones there would be the wastewater and the water treatment plant projects, and in addition, we had previously discussed some changes. So the police facility was removed for now until staff prepare a report on options and so forth. Again, just a review of the debt affordability model, to remind everybody that kind of 29, 30, 30, 31 years, which kind of have our highest at just under 25% debt service ratio, again, assuming you borrow in the year following the year we slate a project to start, which never usually happens, but this is our kind of conservative estimate of debt service ratios in those cases. And this is the projected debt servicing costs over time, so it gets as high as just over $8 million in '31, '32. And this would be wastewater and town together. Again, just a summary of how we're paying for this $16 million capital budget for '25, '26. You can see, as I mentioned, we're using 1.5 million of gas tax. It's not because we received a double payment or anything, it's just using up that accumulated balance that we have there. And we have about 6.6 million of debt financing. And we're proposing to use 2.2 million of capital from operating to minimize any borrowing that we need to do. Just a little reminder, especially for new counselors, we have an operating reserve policy and a capital reserve policy, and those reserve policies do set a minimum target. So the operating reserve has a minimum target of 20% of general operating expenses, so based on the previous slide that I just showed you, for '25, '26, we would be at 45.8%, which is still well above the 20% minimum. In addition, for the capital reserve, we do have a minimum level in the capital reserve that was our target, which was 10%. So at the end of '25, '26, we would project that to be 8.5%. So it is a little bit under, but we also realize the operating reserve is significantly over, and we could, we could make a transfer into the capital reserve from the operating reserve, from the undesignated or... reserve, from the undesignedated or another project we knew was capital. But, again, it just ties our hands a bit, and where the two combined are okay, it's not a, a large concern. But, if council was concerned about that, we could certainly make the numbers look better, but we know that it's an operating reserve. Again, we also had to, when we determined these rates, we kind of looked at the FCI's, which may or may not be the best measure, but there's not a whole lot of benchmarks out there for what municipalities should have set aside. Because as you can imagine, towns would be different than municipalities based on infrastructure and whatnot. So, it's really hard to determine kind of what that level should be. The only other really resource we have is an old article from two thousand and nine, which, which basically suggested two months of general operating fund expenses. So, no different than what they would tell you at home, you should have two to three months of, of expenses saved in your emergency fund. So, kind of the same holds true, which, for us, that would be about sixteen point seven percent, and we're, again, well over that targeted amount. So, that's all. Does anybody have any questions on reserves? Excellent. I just wanted to circle back to wastewater rates. So, the last time that we talked about wastewater rates was just a separate presentation, just on really looking at twenty-five, twenty-six rates, but also looking kind of at the long-term plan, you know, potentially funding depreciation in the future so that it's operating more like the water utility is in, in funding that. And again, putting that money away for future replacements. So, I did give council some examples of ten, fifteen, and twenty percent rate increases, as well as those forecasted out over ten years, to give council an idea of what the saving of, of what the revenue generated could be, what the rates could look like for residents, as well as what the long-term availability of funds to fund capital would be by funding that depreciation reserve. So, it was a lot, but what, you know, the intent for that was to ensure that we're not short-sighted when setting the twenty-five, twenty-six rates, that we keep in mind the long-term and what that will look like, and it starts with twenty-five, twenty-six. In twenty-five, twenty-six, there's really not a big impact on what the rate set for this year will be, except that it sets the tone for future rates and the ability to get that rate up high enough to fund depreciation in the long run. So, just, this is what was presented to council for a fifteen percent rate increase overall. There are some variances through that. So, when we met last year, the residential rate was set at five hundred and eighteen dollars, and the additional residential units was set at four hundred and sixty-six dollars, which was a percentage of the full rate. So, if we have a two-unit building, one unit pays five eighteen, the second unit pays four sixty-six. So, it was discussed that we were moving towards those being equivalent when we met last year, so I've reflected that here, of course, open to council recommendations on that, but just to show you what that could be. So, raising them both to five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which would only be a nine percent increase for those single unit residential or the first unit, but a twenty-one percent increase for those additional units. Similar to that for commercial rates, so eleven hundred and nine was last year's rate, proposing to equate the first unit and the additional units' rates to get them up to one thousand two hundred and twenty, about a ten percent increase for the, for the base commercial unit. In addition, we know that some of our rates for our other categories of commercial users were a bit low compared to water consumption, which is kind of used as an estimate of what their wastewater contribution could be. So, again, working to get those rates up, looking for an overall fifteen percent increase in rates. It's suggested that some of those rates go up between ten to twenty percent, depending on which rate it is. So, for example, large industrial moving from forty-five thousand to fifty-four thousand, just a, a modest increase, but that particular rate increasing by twenty percent. This is really the last slide for the presentation piece. Currently, the budget as prepared is prepared with a fifteen percent wastewater rate right now. We did look, though, at, at ten, fifteen, and twenty as options, so we just wanted to make sure that council's comfortable with the fifteen percent, or whether they wanted to look at the other ones before our next meeting, which I think is March thirty-first, to allow staff time to make changes as needed.
So, that's kind of where we landed, was on the fifteen, but I was, is council still sitting at the fifteen? Does anyone have a desire to, to change it? I don't think we want to do more. Yeah, I think, I think, I think council felt that balance, you know, you need to increase it so that we're not kicking the can down the road too far, but if you increase it too much, then it's, the burden's too much, so.
Yep, nope, that's great.
I'm seeing nods and odds at fifteen.
And any particularly questions about the individual rates? Because, again, they were just determined to kind of get us to that fifteen overall rate. There is some flexibility, but some have larger impacts than, than others when you adjust them. You know, there's one large industrial user, so any change in that is, all that category's going to create versus we have, you know, a couple thousand homes that are under the residential rate. So, even though the rate change is small, there's many more users.
Matching the additional, whether it's commercial, residential, just makes sense because they could use exactly the same amount of services, but one was paying significantly less. So, like, we, I think we held off and went slower for the additional, but I think it's, that was the goal, like you said, was to get to where you're proposing. Any questions on any of those from council? Council, no?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, what was the, like, logical rationale behind, like, you know, nine percent for residential, but at twenty-two for, I know, I, sorry, versus, like, fifteen percent for hospital wastewater and so on? Like, I understand some of the rates are matching, which I totally understand why, you know, residential is, the additional residential say twenty-one percent, but for the non-additional units, what was kind of the logic between them? How'd you come up with those numbers?
Right, so, many, many, many years ago, before I arrived, we had looked at using water consumption as an estimate for wastewater rates, and at that time, they had, had identified which categories of our users were underpaying. So, we did know which groups of users needed to kind of get elevated. So, for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year, we actually, previously, we just kind of had a commercial rate. We didn't have multiple rates under that, other than hotels and the hospital. So, we did revamp that to kind of break out education, grocery, car wash, and so on. And when we set those, when those rates got established last year, they were, in some cases, pretty sizable increases from the eleven hundred and nine dollar commercial rate they would have previously had. So, it was just an attempt to get those, you know, fifteen is kind of the average. Hotels, you know, they're getting pretty close to in line with that consumption-based model, but there were certainly other ones like education and large industrial and so on that had a ways to go to get closer to a consumption, what they would be paying on a consumption basis. Again, we don't have the ability to know what they're putting out, so, again, it's just an estimate. But, it was a move to get those ones closer to realistic a little more slowly over time.
So, if I understand you correctly, I guess, the end goal or where we're at is to get them to a point where they're roughly about what they're taking in is mostly what we're trying to get to.
Yes.
It's not a perfect one for one, but roughly what we're trying to judge is what they're taking in.
Exactly.
Pretending that's what they're putting out.
We don't have the ability to understand, for example, I'll use a grocery store that uses a lot more water than I would have thought, but they're watering fruits, vegetables, and so on. So, does that enter the wastewater system? I don't have the technology to know that. But, we know how much water they consume, and so it's our best estimate of what their wastewater contribution could be. So, those ones are sometimes hard to judge. We have to stick with the water consumption information that we have, and so it gives us an idea of who may be underpaying for their wastewater. It's not, it, the categories still aren't perfect, but it's a lot better information than when we were just using regular, in residential and commercial rates.
Council Conklin?
I thought, I thought we broke out the car wash into a separate.
It's under education, grocery, and car wash.
Yeah.
Because they're, ultimately, when reviewing their water consumption for the past couple of years, they weren't that different, and there were only so many categories one could, you know, we were trying to minimize the number of categories while getting at the problem, and they actually weren't that different in their water consumption amounts, so.
Okay. I thought it was separate, but you're just saying because they, it's almost the same amount, you're doing the same.
You know, they're, they're close in consumption, and so when we talk about the wastewater utility and the budget of thirty thousand dollars, we're obviously going to be working closely with our consultants who did that original report for council, and we'll eventually get to the point where they, you know, build a revised model. I have one that I, that I use to kind of estimate where we're getting, and it's just that model's so old that even the wastewater capital budgets changed so drastically from the time they prepared that report, that it's, that even the rates that were established there are outdated, and so we would want to know what they would recommend. So, we're just trying to get people closer to what, or, you know, property owners closer to what they'll have to pay. There's no level of precision till everybody's getting billed, billed based on water consumption, but we're getting there.
Other questions on wastewater rates? Okay.
So, just, this is kind of getting us ready for the, the next step, but I just want to check to see if there was anything else there we need to talk about. Not really right now. So, the main thing to let council know is, I think we're scheduled to meet again on March thirty-first. We do know that some changes, and they were even mentioned here this evening, some, some information that's come in late, we're hoping to have the LCLC budget. Police had identified they didn't have anything in their budget for an operations review and so forth. So, we do have a list of changes we were holding on to that came in kind of after we finalized this version of the operating budget. So, when we come on March thirty-first, there will be things, we know, we'll know what CPI is for staff salaries, so, because we just used an estimate when budget was prepared back in December, if it's, if it's a significant difference from that estimate, we will be making those revisions too, so. But, we'll be able to tell council what all the changes were from this version to the next version, but we are anticipating a few changes.
Okay, any questions?
Wasn't CPI already announced?
Nope. We, by policy, our CPI is February to February, and February is not released until tomorrow. So, staff are anxiously waiting CPI, so they know what their increments are. But, also for budget purposes, in a perfect world, if this CPI is not dramatically different than what it would have been in December, my hope is to amend our policy to be December to December. I just don't want to bring policy change when it could disadvantage staff by being lower. So, I, I've been waiting a couple of years to, be like, okay, no, not this time, you know, so when it gets released and staff are no worse off, and we can amend it to go December, from December to December, then we'll make that proposal to council so that we can know what CPI is before the end of March, when we're trying to get a budget approved, so. And I always think, like, oh, it's fine, CPI will settle down. And it never quite seems to settle down. It's still very dramatic right till the very end, so.
Wonder what. Perfect. Anything else, Kim?
Nope, that's everything for me.
Okay, anything from?
Just if there, I guess if there were other things that council was looking for, for changes to the budget, we will be making the revisions this week, so if there was anything you want to talk about this evening, then.
Is there anything that we missed that council wants to talk about? Council Caldwell?
Only one thing. I, I hate to belabor the meeting, you know, even longer, but. So, I think I bring this up every year, but, so the sidewalk budget is a hundred and sixty thousand, so we're spending a lot more on roads. I don't know what the actual number is, because I assume that's not all paving. But, it's, it seems like the ratio is out of whack, that we should be spending a little bit more on the sidewalks, and they are in sorry shape. And I just wish we could spend even a, a little bit more, even if it had to be taken out of the paving of the roads, a, a little bit. I just think, I'd just like to see that bumped up a little.
I think it comes down to capacity, right? If we ask that more, is... Last question, I think?
It certainly does come down to capacity. Staff do at every year, every year with pavement management's program. When we issue that tender, we issue, we obtain the unit prices for the replacement, the full replacement of curb in its entirety by the contractor, but also if the public works were doing prep work, and the same with sidewalk. And we're seeing those unit prices almost double what the town can complete the work for, so it's really hard to justify doing it by contracted services when we know we can do the work, but we have a resource issue of trying to get that work done. So, it's, the only, the only time when it's close is when we're just purely able to pull the old surface off, not do any prep work to the subgrade, and then pour over top, put a new one, and that's, those circumstances aren't always there to do that. So, it's, it's unfortunate. I do agree that we do need to put more money into sidewalks. It does come down to resources at this point.
So, you do feel that you're maxed out for sidewalk work?
We've done with, with public works this past year, I thought we've made some significant progress on a lot of our sidewalks, and we're trying to ensure that we're meeting our standard. So, our standard is only asphalt for multi-use trail and concrete for sidewalks, and we've still, we've done a lot, we've done a lot more sidewalks this year in concrete. It's very easier to do than asphalt, I would think, but it's, our standard is concrete, so. It would be nice to do more, that's.
So, the one sixty is about the most you feel you can handle from a resource perspective?
At this point, yes.
Yes.
And certainly, if there's ever an opportunity, you know, midsummer or whatnot, and I talk to staff, I, I've always kind of left it open to come back to council and say, we, you know, we do have five priorities, we're only able to complete four on our shortlist, and we need another fifty thousand dollars. I mean, there's always the opportunity to come to council mid-budget, I know that's not ideal, but it's, it's something that, it's challenging with the amount of sidewalks. We are, the good thing this year is we are trying to address sidewalks in and around the school as much as we can do with the new crosswalk that we're putting in, so we're trying to maximize that two-month window when schools closed.
I would, I probably can speak for council and say that if you came back and said, we have an opportunity to do more sidewalks because the weather's been favorable or another project has fallen through, please come back to council and ask.
And, and that's where this year with the Veterans Bridge, council came, we came back to council and said, you know, while we're, we're looking at doing the Veterans Bridge through cost here with the province, can we reallocate that funds to, to that on North Street to get that one done? And council was very minimal to that, so we were able to do some, some good work there.
Does that help you? Now, we're wishing we see Matt in the summer with some. Council Conklin?
So, I agree with Councilor Caldwell there on the sidewalk thing. So, would we be able to move, say, that one fifty we had allotted for paving BMA with, because we were going to use town resources too in prepping that, right? So, could we use town resources into the sidewalk?
So, you guys are always kind of like, beat me down. So, with the engineering service manager, did make contact with the contractor between this last meeting and this meeting to see what public works would be able to do in terms of prep work for the BMA. So, the price has been lower slightly, but unfortunately, not that significant amount. Just to, to pull that asphalt level and prep it for asphalt, it's only about seven thousand dollars. A lot of the money is in the black dock.
Which the contractors do.
Yes, correct, so.
And that's at ninety thousand now, right?
Little lower now, but yes.
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three, correct.
But not in the budget? Not in the public budget document?
Correct. It's, we still need the money allocated to public works to prep the area, so.
Yeah.
We are doing a little bit better.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Council Conklin?
Okay, so, under community well-being, there's seventeen thousand allotted for bus stops and shelters?
Tried, I tried.
Yeah. What's seventeen thousand dollars going to do?
So.
How many shelters are?
With this year, we were, we, we have already purchased two shelters to go in. We are having a little. We are having a little bit of a problem with the work that's going in the hospital to construct that shelter there.
Okay.
So the shelter's already bought, ready to go, but we certainly don't, while they're doing their work, don't want to install it. So we are taking that money that we have in, that we're carrying forward and actually purchasing the third shelter. So the $17,000 that is in next year's budget will cover the installation of two shelters, both at the, near the hospital and at the DeSprez Museum. It's a little give and take, but given that it's a 12 to 14-week delivery of the shelter, I thought it would be best to do, buy that shelter now, especially since the contractor held the pricing from the previous shell, the previous bid.
That's great. That's good.
Let me check with finance that we're allowed to accept that.
Well, good luck patients, busy stops. So that's good. Councilor Newell?
I'm, I'm just curious for the business park infrastructure, $2,000 for power, is that like our power, or like what point does Nova Scotia Power do, like?
That's for power poles and the lines to be run.
Okay.
To service any structure that would go in the, in the expanded business park area.
So for...
Because we're the developer, we're responsible for running the power.
Okay.
Yeah.
At what, like, at what point does Nova Scotia Power would or would not do any of that?
They don't, we pay for it.
Oh, okay.
They would never do it for free.
Interesting. I just thought, because do they not...
Because it's new, it's a new line, right? So...
At some point, the person who is going to develop the lot will pay Nova Scotia Power for their part, right? But we have to get, we have to get it started.
Yeah.
The more you learn.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, if you have a question that comes up during the week, please send it through the CAO. Just a reminder, if there's any public still watching, we have Talk Bridgewater Wednesday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 at the LCLC, and then from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Thursday at South Shore Center down by Tim Hortons. We had some really good discussions last time, so council will have its budget document ready to go and answer questions, so I hope to see people there. That's it. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Councilor Newell, signed by Councilor Fujir, we are adjourned. Thank you.